I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we begin, I'd like to note just one slight change on the agenda this evening. On number eight, under Topics for Action, we'll be switching the second bullet with the third bullet. Switching Community Advisory Committee bullet with the Planning Process bullet tonight. So just making you aware of that. And then we'll begin tonight with recognition for Sandy Kovac.
All right. I would ask Amy Dickerson, Brand Starz, to join me up here. Gentlemen, if you'd welcome to my mic. David Cottrell is not going to join us. The marching band is having their banquet this evening, so we'll have to catch David another time. We are very honored to bring to you tonight this evening three Hudson High School students who have the attention of the National Merit Scholarship Program. David has been named a merit semifinalist in the National Merit Scholarship Competition. There are approximately 16,000 high school seniors nationwide who are competing for more than 32 million in scholarship awards. Seniors who are here this evening, Andrew Dickerson and Brand Starz, have been named commended students in the 2012 competition. They are among 34,000 students nationwide who are recognized for their exceptional academic promise. And I'd ask the gentlemen to kind of share a little bit about making next year's plans, what they're hoping to do, and then see if you have any further questions for them.
All right. Well, I hope we go the Air Force Academy next year.
I haven't decided on a college yet, but I'm hoping to get a degree in applied physics, so I'm actually going to get a degree in engineering.
Oh, very charming. Sure are the only place, honey, we should go. I'm like, here Cordell's not a bad place to go either. Just kidding. It's all Armored, it's got, spent 11 years flying F-16s after graduation, and it was a great experience.
But don't let the...
Me too. So Brand, if you'd like to tell us, Mr. Bell, we've sounded good mentor and guide you. You're good?
I'm actually excited about all three of the students and the work and the families and the teachers, and the amount of investment that you've made yourselves and the communities around you. It's great to see. So congratulations.
Congratulations, gentlemen. Very good job.
Next, I'm going to have Nick Persinger come to the mic. Nick is an eighth grader at Hudson Middle School. And I'll tell you the whole story, but in sixth grade, he started working with Sustain Hudson, which is, for the most part, has been an adult kind of organization. But he is really into environmental sustainability and actually created a video, which is 18 minutes long, so we're not going to share that all with you tonight. But we're going to let him highlight some of the key pieces that he's been working on with Sustain Hudson this evening. Pretty amazing for an eighth grade student. I know you'll be impressed.
My name is Nick Persinger, and I'm an eighth grader at Hudson Middle School. And I got involved with sustainability...
Is there a police license or a license certificate?
I got involved with sustainability two years ago. And my science teacher recommended that I join the Radical Recyclers Club at the middle school. And I did that, and through that, I had met Miss Mitchell, who had recommended that I come to the Sustain Hudson meeting, which is outside of the district, and an industry committee, which is R-3, which R-3 encourages students and staff to, you know, practice sustainability and within the district, and educate students towards doing so. And Sustain Hudson does nearly the same thing. They challenge community members and businesses to practice sustainability, and if they already are, to bump it to the next level. Some of the projects I had done on those committees and those organizations were, well, one, I created a video which highlights pretty much what we're for, what we do, and why we do it, and what viewers can do to, you know, improve in their own life. And that was exciting to me because it combined some of my own personal skills with something I, another thing I really love. So it was just, it was one big thing I liked. And another project I worked on is I created an app for the Android powered devices for the organization. And so far, we've had 1,500 downloads of it, which is pretty awesome. And that was fun for me because I like math and I like stuff like that. And those are just two of the many projects I've done on that. So do you have any questions for me, or what I do, or going on?
I have a question for you. How did you become so articulate?
Patience.
That was amazing to actually make up two sentences about us like this. But I do have one serious question. That is, what's been your primary inspiration? How did you come inspired to take this on?
Well, actually, before I had my science teacher recommended it to me to, you know, kind of get into sustainability. I hadn't really, I mean, I had been interested in it for a long time, and I had recommended it to my family and, you know, people I know to get involved with that sort of thing. And but it just, it hit me that I could be doing something myself to be helping others get to that point. And that was my inspiration for that.
Very cool. Anybody else have any questions for me? Congratulations.
And next, we'll have our yearbook staff, along with their advisors. Debbie Lee and Steve Kennedy join us up front. Once again, our outstanding high school yearbook has received several awards. This is becoming an annual event to have this staff here. So I know the students are going to share their awards and some of the work that goes beyond behind our outstanding yearbook.
Good evening. I'm Steve Kennedy. I teach AP Language and Composition at the high school and yearbook now with Miss Lee. And just a brief overview of the awards we won recently, as of last week, at the Chippewa Valley School Press Association, hosted through University of Wisconsin Eau Claire, which we're down there and did some workshops during the day and received the awards. And we participate in this every year, and every year, our students are recognized fairly heavily in the state competition. And our yearbook has gotten awards also from the national agencies. And let the girls identify themselves and tell you a few of the awards and the staff to get.
Hi, I'm Miranda Fawn, and I am the sports editor slash assistant to editors in chief. And I just want to start off by saying thank you for the support and letting us create an awesome book because without yearbook, I'd probably be lost. I spend so much time in the yearbook room. I love... Obviously, it's award-winning, and it's a lot of fun to make the books because I, without that, I wouldn't be able to learn that I wanted to go into photojournalism before. I was completely undecided. And now I've gone through taking pictures with photography through like the football page that I am working on currently. Took pictures for football and last year, just throughout the entire year. And I just really enjoy yearbook, and it's a lot of fun. And here is our yearbook from last year. I'll hand this to... If you guys can spread it around. That's our only copy to give you because we sold out. It was a hit. And everyone loves getting them. I know when we handed them out to the seniors on the last few days of school, they were just all lined up and they were all like, "Oh, yay, we get our yearbooks." And first person to the yearbook, and they're like, "Oh, yay, I'm so excited for it. Look forward to the end of the year to get the yearbooks." And obviously, it turned out really well. So thank you once again.
Thank you.
I'm Sarah Reams. This is my first year in yearbook, and I, throughout this couple of months so far, I've learned that I have to be involved in the school, and I actually have a social life now. The yearbook staff traveled to the University of Wisconsin Eau Claire, where we were honored for the Chippewa Valley School Press Association Conference. There were over 100 students from the area schools attended the event on November 7th on the UW EC campus. The event took place in the newly completed WR Davies Center of the UW EC campus. We, along with middle and high school students from Eau Claire, Altoona, Chippewa Falls, and many others, attended workshops with journalism professionals gathering new skills in photography, story writing, and many other topics in press media. The Hudson High School took several overall and individual awards. And Miranda is handing out the list of awards we were honored with. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm Tricia Wood. I've been on the yearbook, I'm in yearbook two, so I've been in here for two years. I'm the copy editor, and I really like yearbook because it's a great way to meet new people, and you get to know more about them and their stories and find out, like, there's a lot of exciting stuff about other people. And some of the judges' comments on our yearbook is, "It's great that you can recognize the value of direct quotes from your reader." It's always superb when a staff recognizes that the reader should tell most of its story of the year through their words. And also that you have produced a book that I'm sure your school and community are proud of. I get the feeling you know what it takes to create an outstanding book. And we got a National Scholastic Press Association with a first class, first class with one mark of distinction, so.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jordan Maliner, and I am a yearbook one student. I'm a sophomore at Hudson High School. And I'm in yearbook because I had an interest in, or I have an interest in like kind of organizing things around like on pages and just like editing just stuff on pages, I guess. And recently, we received the certificate from the Columbia Scholastic Press Association at Columbia University in the city of New York. And some of the comments from the judges were, "Truly a gold medal book, big and bold, lots of photos, and a real sense of the history of the 2011-2012 school year." I know that every staff brings their own energy and insight to the process. And that's just some of them, so yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Debbie Lee, as Mr. Kennedy had stated. And I just want to, on behalf of the yearbook staff and Mr. Kennedy, thank you so much for your support over the year and over the years. We are both reminded every year because of emails from students who have been on our staff how much their experience has helped them, whether it's applying for a job, whether it's applying for an internship, or even getting a job. I've had students, top of the line students, one in particular who said, "Mrs. Lee, when I started the yearbook class, I was so shy, I could not talk to an individual. And now that I've finished the year, I can talk to anyone." So that's just one small impact, but a great impact. So thank you very much. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, students and staff. Thanks for honoring us with your good work and that goes for all of the students who are recognized tonight as well. So thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
And Mr. President, board members, and those people in our audience, community members and staff, we have an absolutely fantastic national announcement once again to make. Over the last three years at our annual meeting, we've talked about unprecedented results. And this last year at the annual meeting, we changed that to excellence in action, and that really reflects on our vision statement. And so today, we are looking at that excellence in action and the results of the work of more talented students that you've just seen before you, but even more that aren't all here this evening. And so the Hudson School District once again has been nationally recognized by the College Board and is on the advanced placement honor roll. There are 539 districts within the United States and Canada who have been recognized with this honor, on this year's honor roll. And the criteria to be included is simultaneously increasing access to AP coursework and increasing the percentage of students earning a three out of five or higher on AP exams. This is our third year in a row in being named to this honor roll. And the honor roll has been in existence for exactly three years. There are only two other districts in the state of Wisconsin who have been named to this honor roll for those three years, and they are Kimberly and Green Bay. So Hudson is one of three in Wisconsin that has been named to this honor roll. And one of 44 in the United States who have been on this honor roll for three years. So out of all the school districts in the United States, 44 have been named for three years, and Hudson is one of those. So certainly a wonderful honor for this district, for the high school, for our AP teachers. It's evidence of the Hudson School District System for Learning that we have been continuing to work on to prepare all of our students to learn at higher and rigorous levels. It's evidence of the, the impact of our SMART goals. And as the board knows, we have had SMART goals at the high school on AP, increasing the number of students who take AP courses and are ready for those, and also the percentage of students who are passing those AP exams. So it's something that we have been working on. The College Board sets their standard at 70% passing. And our standard is higher than that. We have targeted 80% of our students passing. This last year, we were at 77, but we increased the number of students significantly. So even with that, we're exceeding the national expectations with our own expectations, something that we continue to do on a regular basis, both at the state and the national level. So I applaud the learning results certainly of Hudson students who have challenged themselves with college-level work while still in high school. And we also applaud certainly the Hudson's AP teachers who have helped our students reach this goal, and I'd like to name them. Certainly, we have one in the audience we've seen this evening. Steve Kennedy introduced himself as an AP teacher. I don't know if he knew we were going to talk about the AP results or not. And he teaches Language and Composition. We also have Art Studio, Mary McLinsky teaches that. Calculus is Steve Cosman. Chemistry, Vicki McLaughlin. Computer Programming, Steve Solom. German, Chuck Bublitz. Literature and Composition, Lori Harmon. Physics, Vicki McLaughlin. Psychology, Bob Smith and Jason Swavely. Spanish, Anne White. Statistics, Steve Solom. U.S. Government and Politics, Matt Friedel. And U.S. History, John Ammon and Jay Klutz. And hopefully, I didn't miss anyone with, in that list. You know, in 2004-05 school year, we had nine AP courses. And now this year, we have 13 AP courses, and we also have a series of courses online as well that extend that list. And in 2005-06, we had 163 students who took 240 AP exams. And this year, this last year, we had 387 who took 579 exams. So a very significant increase over that time period, something that we've really focused on. This level of accomplishment isn't achieved when a student just gets to their junior or senior year. It's created by a systems approach that really increases the level of learning of students all the way through the system, starting in early childhood and kindergarten and working through all the teachers and administrators, both at the school level and the district level, who have helped support this. I know Sandy Kovac has been very instrumental in helping support this effort. So it takes the support of everyone in our school district to help our students achieve at this level. Certainly, the Board of Education, who provides this direction and also provides the necessary resources to make this happen. So that's why the College Board honors districts and not just high schools. So in the words of the College Board President, David Coleman, "We applaud the extraordinary efforts of the devoted teachers and administrators in these 539 districts who are fostering rigorous work worth doing." These educators have not only expanded student access to AP coursework, but they have enabled more of their students to achieve on a college level, which is helping create a strong college-going culture. So congratulations certainly to the students who have challenged themselves and reached these standards, to our AP teachers, to our elementary, middle school, and high school, and district administrators and teachers who have all worked together to achieve this kind of recognition for the Hudson School District. So moving right along, we have more recognition this evening. And it's my honor to also recognize Holton Elementary. So Ann, the principal at Holton, would you come forward? And Ann Mitchell, this is an initiative from the United States Department of Agriculture, supported by the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction. And Holton Elementary School has been recognized with a Silver Award for the Healthier U.S. School Challenge. This is an award that is given as the school is meeting rigorous standards for school meals, physical activity, and nutrition education, recognizing the excellence in nutrition and physical activity. Certainly, a very worthy effort that we all achieved too. So congratulations to Holton. They have a financial award of $1,000 that they get for this award, and certainly other banners and so forth they'll be able to proudly display in their school. So Ms. Mitchell, I know you have some students with you and staff that I know you're anxious to introduce.
The award is largely due to the efforts of Kristy Faust, our Nutrition Services Manager here. She has three, many wonderful qualities, but three I want to share with you that she doesn't know I'm going to say. One of them is her sense of humor. It goes a long way when you're a lunch lady. And a second one is her willingness to be a team player. She came to us with the grant and said, "I think we should go for this," or the award, and worked with Ashley McGee, our FIAD teacher, our Student Health and Wellness Team. You're going to meet a couple of the members here tonight. And with the whole team at Holton to try to make this happen for Holton. She basically was trying to recognize what we were already doing and then take it up a notch, as Nick has said so well. She didn't really want to say too much tonight, but I wanted you to know about that. The other quality that I see in her is a risk taker. She's really willing. When Peggy Eller mentioned this to all the nutrition managers, Kristy came to me and said, "I think we should do it." And I really appreciate that about her. Now, I want you to meet a couple of the students from our Student Health and Wellness Committee. They work really hard on a monthly basis, at least. We meet after school. And a couple of the things they're working on is making our concert snacks nutritious and healthy and encouraging students at Holton to eat more fruits and vegetables. That was something we noticed when we did a self-assessment at our school. So I'm going to let them introduce themselves, and that's all they want to do.
I am Piper Lee Sun.
I am Cameron Robson.
That underestimates the value of their contribution. Thank you.
And we can't let this opportunity go by without a photo op, so we've got the award also here.
Danny, did you get it?
All right, Mr. President, moving on to a presentation that will be made by the district at the State Education Convention in Milwaukee this January. And that's Flip It Forward: Transform School Culture. Dana Kreenbuehl and Laura Love will be presenting on behalf of the high school. Flip It Forward is designed to transform the school culture by breaking down social barriers among students to help promote respect and trust. A wonderful effort that is being recognized throughout the state with numerous opportunities for Dana to present and Laura to present with her, both at the state level and the regional level. So this is a great program that Dana is leading in the high school and one that is very advantageous for our students and to enhance the culture at the high school. So we look forward to their presentation for those of you that will be attending the convention in Milwaukee. And lastly, just an announcement that every few years, the district conducts a review and an update of our board policies to make sure certainly that they align with our current practice and current legal requirements. We also review the policies for updating wording, clarity, local experience, learning from other districts. And we're in the process of starting to go through our policies now, so you'll see a number of them coming in the next few months and over the next year as we look at updating them. Nancy Sweet is working with the administrators that you see around the table on those policies. And we will be bringing them both to committees and back to the board for action as they need updating. And that concludes my report. Mr. President?
Thank you. I will move to reports, starting with Sandy Kovac.
The district has been focused on increasing opportunities to broaden teacher capacity and leadership throughout the district. Tonight, Peg Shoemaker, Willow River Principal and Elementary Literacy Leader, and members of the Elementary Literacy Team will be highlighting the important work of one of those committees. Peg.
Thanks. I always seem to have trouble with that. So thank you for inviting us to come this evening. And we actually made this presentation, our literacy coaches and myself and a literacy facilitator made this presentation at Wisconsin Association, the WA CD Conference. So we made that earlier, and Mary asked us to come back and share with you a system that we have in place that we've built over the last five years that actually increases our teacher capacity and our teacher leadership levels in the area of literacy, so in both reading and writing. And so before I get started, I'd like to introduce to my right Deidre Blamers. She's a second grade North Hudson teacher. And Tara Zink, a Holton first grade teacher. And Sherri Hole, a special education teacher in speech and language at EP Rock. And then Dave will make some final statements. Dave Grambo from Learning Services at the end of the presentation. So as I said, Mary talked about this system that we have. And this is a system that I'll be speaking about that actually has built and improved our literacy results in part with using teacher leaders. And we developed a different model for a traditional sort of committee approach. And tonight, we're going to tell you about that model that we developed. So what we, if you look at the work from Learning Forward, which is a national professional development organization, they talk about how we align, adapt, and focus our efforts. And as we were pondering what we were going to do about five years ago to transform our literacy system, we really looked at these sorts of questions. How do you assist staff in aligning the teaching, learning, and assessment strategies? How do you assist them in reaching a readiness threshold for a new way of teaching and learning? And we'll talk tonight a little bit how we're continuing to adapt with our new Common Core state standards. And then finally, how do we assist staff in providing clarity for what and how to teach? So those were sort of the system, are the questions that we asked ourselves as we attempted to transform our system. So what guided us from the very beginning is how are we going to transform every classroom to scale? And I've spoken with the board about that before. And, but I highlight that because that's really what the work of these teacher leaders do, is they help to ensure that we have every student, every classroom, every day, participating in high-quality instruction in, in our buildings. And they'll tell you a little bit about how they do that. The other piece that we pondered is how do we bring principals in, into the picture from that traditional management role to that role of being a learner alongside of teachers as well as an instructional leader in the building? Our foundation for our literacy system is really based on the high expectations, high support, and high accountability. Our literacy facilitators, whom I'll, we'll get started in a minute with their part of the presentation, are really part of the high expectations and the high support piece. And so they provide support to the entire system and, and provide us with feedback as well as keep challenging us to keep raising those expectations. So if you look at, at capacity building, you think about what really these teachers in front of you are, is they help service professional developers along with principals, along with Learning Services personnel, and along with our instructional coaches. They themselves help engage in professional learning of other teachers who, who teach literacy. So this was our question way back in 2008. How do we create a comprehensive system where every teacher, every classroom, every school engages in high-quality literacy instruction every day? We knew that in order to do the kinds of work that we wanted to do, we had to change the support mechanisms and the feedback mechanisms and the professional learning mechanisms in order to do that. And so we looked at how do we increase the capacity of, of a small group of teachers who have done sorts, all kinds of things, including being a demonstration learning lab within their building where other teachers come in and actually watch them teach, and they engage in dialogue about that teaching. So at, back in 2008, we had a really traditional structure of a Language Arts Committee. They would make recommendations for revisions. We'd work with the benchmarks. We'd kind of look at the curriculum. It was pretty traditional. We had a group of reading teachers and specialists that worked with small groups. They, they supported teachers periodically. And we knew that that wasn't enough. So have a look here then at the Traditional Language Arts Committee versus what we call our Elves. So bear with the acronym, but what we mean by that is Elementary Literacy Facilitators. We have been known during the year to sometimes wear headbands with certain things on them that actually help cement that idea of an Elf. We do call ourselves the Elves. That's what the teachers call themselves. And we know education is steeped in acronyms, and we have lots of fun with that, but it's become part of our vernacular, is this is the work of the Elves. So their primary, their primary focus then is on teacher practice and applying those best practices into the classroom. We have six elementary schools, obviously, and we have 18 Elves representing both the regular classroom as well as the special education classroom. So I'm going to turn this over to the teachers, and, and then I'll come back, and then Dave will end our presentation. And of course, we're always welcome questions along the way or at the end.
All right, my name is Deidra Blamers, and I teach second grade at North Hudson Elementary. I've been an Elf or an Elementary Literacy Facilitator since the very beginning. And as a facilitator, I think I've had the opportunity to grow professionally in so many ways. I'm just going to highlight a few of those tonight. But some of the most significant things that I think have been helpful for me and for some of my colleagues is that as an Elf, I've been on the forefront of kind of district initiatives. So there's some things that have come about in the past four years that have really changed as a teacher. And I've been able to share that with my colleagues, and so I'll share some of those with you tonight. The first, one of the first things is that I've always been really driven by best practice and current research in literacy. And I just have a passion for it. I've had the chance to be kind of referred to a demonstration classroom or a lab classroom, we call it actually. And it's where other teachers, we may be bringing whatever initiative we're working on forward and doing that in our classroom. And so other teachers are able to come in, give me feedback on what they see, and we can collaborate and talk about what's happening in the classroom. And it's really powerful. So that's something I've had the opportunity to do. I've also been able to embed inquiry into my teaching. And we know that that's really kind of the wave of the future. We want all kids to be learning through inquiry. And so to integrate those subject areas has been really powerful for me. And being an Elf has given me the opportunity to study that and to look at what's, what's best in that area, too. And then most recently, as Elves, we've had the opportunity to kind of unpack the Common Core standards. And that's been great because I've been able to really learn those standards and then take my knowledge of that and, and work with the curriculum and, and proceed. Another big part of being an Elf is the benefits of collaborating with other teacher leaders and then learning from them. It's really impacted my own teaching and, and my reflections. And then finally, working with my principals and the SMART team as well to share those initiatives and be a liaison between our building and Learning Services. So finally, I just, I love being an Elf, and I value my role as an educator and a facilitator, but most of all as a learner for the Hudson School District. So thank you.
Hi, my name is Tara Zink, and I'm a first grade teacher at Holton Elementary. And I'm going to be talking about what we've tried to accomplish as Elementary Literacy Facilitators. When I think about my role as an Elementary Literacy Facilitator, otherwise known as an Elf, I can think of at least three ways that we've had an impact on our system. First, being a stronger system of communication. Second, we have a great focus on addressing instructional and curricular gaps in our district. And third is the desire or the drive it's given me for new learning and to bring that back into my classroom and share that with my students. As an Elementary Literacy Facilitator, we work hard on creating a system for communication. And it's beneficial to both teacher-to-teacher communications and communications between the teachers and administrators at the Learning Services level. Examples of this include support for new teachers. When we have new teachers coming into our building, they might come to me for specific resources that we might have available or to clarify guarantees for literacy that we're expecting in our district. Or maybe to just come into my classroom and I'll model something, some instructional practice that, that they're looking for more help on. We've assisted in implementing the Reader's Workshop format in our district, and we've really focused on making sure that it's a consistent delivery for every child in every classroom every day. We've created the Phases, it's a document of Phases of a Literacy Implementation Plan. And this document is a roadmap of sorts. It's to give us the priorities for, Language Arts being such a huge area to cover, it really gives us priorities for the different components underneath Language Arts, and then serves as a communication tool to figure out our progress on those different areas. And as Deidra said, the demonstration classroom, where we are offering for other colleagues to come into our classroom. First, we'd get our new learning from our meetings and then bring that back and work out the kinks. And then when the colleagues come into our classroom, we would model for them and then have discussion with them and then hopefully support them as they bring it back into their classrooms. Another accomplishment that we have is identifying curricular and instructional gaps. A few years ago, we identified phonics as an area of need in our, our district. And if students would proceed throughout the grades into upper elementary school, they would probably hit a wall in their area of reading because they wouldn't have that strong foundation in connecting those sounds to letters and then words. And we addressed that gap. We've worked with power standards and creating rubrics to assess student writing. This work was done pre-C common Core state standards, but it really helped us to learn what is expected at those specific grade levels for our students. The, the accomplishment I'm most excited about, and as Deidra said as well, is just all of the learning that I have had as an Elf. And it's inspired me to take action and move from really believing in something to practicing it in my classroom. And it makes me seek out best practices and pushes me to the edge of my comfort zone. And then I go back to my colleagues and can share that excitement with them. So my efforts to become a more effective teacher and my passion for literacy has positively impacted my students' learning and my practice and the practice of my colleagues. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Sheri Hole. I'm a special educator. I work as a speech and language pathologist at EP Rock Elementary. I've been in the district for a long time, and I've had a long passion for bringing some of the knowledge that I have as a speech-language pathologist about speaking and listening skills into the area of literacy. It's often sort of overlooked as a foundational skill. One of the things I've been really excited about working both in the traditional Language Arts Curriculum Committee field and now as an Elementary Literacy Facilitator is to learn about the Common Core and learn about the Common Core standards. And when we talk about curriculum, a lot of times we talk about curriculum strands. And in the Common Core, we have the strands of reading, writing, speaking, listening, and language that are woven together as sort of making up that whole strand. And it talks about how the processes of communication are so closely connected. When we were working at unpacking those strands or learning about them, we had the opportunity to make connections between those standards and our specific training and experience and knowledge. And as I was able to look at those strands through my lens as a speech-language pathologist and able to engage in discussion with teachers and administrators, principals, specialists, it really highlighted that we have a common task and a common focus that we're all working on, even though we're kind of coming at it from a little different angle and different disciplines. And the science that I've learned as a speech-language pathologist, things about phoneme acquisition, auditory discrimination, phonological awareness, syntax morphology, pragmatics, all that sort of stuff, are really fibers that are embedded into those strands and are forming that strong foundation that the reading and writing work that our classroom teachers are doing is built on. It talks in the Common Core about having a focus on results rather than the means. And there's a quote in there that says that they're leaving room for teachers, curriculum developers, and states to determine how these goals should be reached and what additional topic should be addressed. And I really think that's what this team is about, sort of figuring out the, the means, how we're going to do that. And I think seeing the big picture by looking at it from a broad perspective helps us see what steps we need to take. How are we going to do this? And how are we going to guarantee that all of our students are going to be able to accomplish the goal that we have for them? I also think that knowing that we as teachers have a really authentic voice in, in looking at curriculum development and implementation is really powerful, and it really reinforces our ownership, and it empowers us to, to move ahead, I think. As I said, I think that this team, for me, is really all about collaboration. I share the information that I learn with both my speech-language pathology team and my special education team, and they're very interested in developing their own knowledge of exactly what's expected and looking at IEP sort of alignment or at least collaboration, maybe. I don't know what word I'm looking for exactly, but kind of making sure that those things sort of join each other. You know, I've been in the district for a long time. I found out Tara was six when I came to Hudson. That was kind of humbling, but whatever. But I can really say that I think being on this committee, I've seen really strong partnerships develop across school districts, or I mean across elementary schools. And we've had new learning that we all take part in at the same time, which leads to new conversations and really that shared focus and, and I think excitement. And that's really a neat thing to see after having done this job for a long time.
So you know why we're, we're terribly excited about this work. If you look at our SMART goal results, you know that we have been blossoming as a district in the area of literacy. And really, there's, there's strong partnership with the teachers who actually do the work in the classroom. And it, it's truly an inspiration to work with them. We meet monthly, sometimes for a day, sometimes for a half a day. We end up leaving exhausted because there's so much passion for literacy and for literacy leadership in the room. And there's a lot of dendrites growing at the end of, of, of the day in, after a literacy facilitation meeting. So thank you for your partnership with supporting this sort of teacher leadership capacity building. It's greatly appreciated, and we're going to hear from Dave now a bit on how we're translating this sort of leadership into other committees.
Thank you very much. So one thing that I wanted to talk about tonight was just what we've learned from the Elf process. And interestingly, as, as Peg said, that it's a, it's an exhausting process. So hats off to our Elves that presented tonight because they actually had an Elf meeting this afternoon. So it's been a, a long day for them. So thank you very much for doing that. But we've learned so much through the process, and we owe a great deal to our Elves and to Peg for the visionary leadership, some very powerful things that you've heard about tonight, and we've learned from that process. And we want to replicate that where we can. So there's certain elements of that process that we've picked up on and said, "You know what? That's something that we can use in other areas to increase capacity again." And really what it comes down to are the three Cs that we've heard tonight. One would be collaboration, an absolute necessary component of what happens. The other one is capacity building, and we've heard about that as well. And now to connections, the way we can connect these things together to make sure that we're providing focus for the entire system. So one area, one team that we're essentially replicating elements of this process is our Teaching, Learning, and Assessment Committee. And that's actually led by Anne Mitchell. But it, again, involves teacher leaders from all over the district pulling together to work on a common mission. And we've taken elements of the process that the Elves have developed and woven that into that process. The Elementary Math Committee is just another example. But honestly, these examples aren't as important as the connections that are made throughout the district. It happens at the secondary level, happens with different curriculum teams, but it's really about those three Cs again. And we want to thank the board for the direction and the support that you've given us to allow this to happen. Sheri was talking about collaboration with administrators and with different team members. It really, it happens at all levels, different collaboration, whether we're talking about a, a group of teachers collaborating on their own or a group of teachers collaborating with a group of administrators. Sometimes administrators working and driving that vision forward. But our system for learning is the compass that drives toward our vision, and these Elves are just an excellent example of that capacity building that we're able to, able to build and continue to build in other ways. So thank you very much. And with that, Peg and I will stay for any questions.
Well, thank you, Dave, and Peg, and Elves. It's, it just goes to show you that only good things happen when Elves are involved. And by the way, I appreciate the extra time you're putting in. I know this is getting to be a busy season coming up for you. I'm sorry about that.
Bam-bam.
Any comments regarding this?
Mr. President, can one of you speak to new teachers, whether they're new in their practice or new to our district, and how that process works for them? I've, I've got to believe that this is kind of eye-opening and very different. And how do you feel like that integration works for new teachers when they're coming to our school?
Well, I really, one of the things that happened last year was a perfect example. We had a new teacher in our building. And a lot of times, you know, when we have curriculum, and Hudson does a good job with new teachers and bringing new teachers in, but unless you have somebody who is kind of working right there with you, it's, it can be difficult sometimes. There's a lot of little things. There's a lot of little things to do. And so as an ELF, being on the forefront of certain things and bringing those back and sharing those and collaborating with new teachers, it's great because that question and answer and a lot of the things we've worked through already as elves, I'm able to share with those new teachers. And so some of the problems are already solved and, and we can help them out and lead them in a new direction. So I really think it's, it's helpful. They all have mentors, but even with that, it's, it's nice to be working with those new teachers as an ELF.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Mark?
Yes, Mr. President. Wonderful report. I could just, your enthusiasm and passion for literacy is quite obvious. And, you know, uncommon to have, you know, when we hear it's about the partnership and collaboration that takes place. I'm always very impressed by that because that's just, that's easy to say and I think something that's very difficult to implement. You know, we as a board don't always play well together. So I know how hard it can be to get people, you know, to work together for mutual benefit. So the fact that you can do that, and of course, the results, 90%, I mean, speak for themselves. So that's, I mean, I just, that's just fantastic. Just, and just lastly, as the, one of the board's primary objectives is to provide the resources for you to get your jobs done. Is 18 elves enough to make the progress we want to see in literacy in the Hudson District?
Yes. There's always that too many, you know, to make decisions, but we represent, we try to represent all grade levels. We do represent all grade levels with, with two, in most cases, three per grade level. And then we have also two special education representatives. We are actually looking at adding a media technology person to our committee because of the integral work that media and technology will, will need in terms of our common core state standards.
Mr. President, just adding on to that, this is a multifaceted system, as I know the board knows. And it's, it's an approach that comes, supports teacher work and student learning from different directions. And one of, another direction is, you know, the reading teacher, certainly. Another direction is the instructional coach that we have. So when you ask about those resources, we could use some more of those as time goes on because that supports the work of our elves, it supports literacy, it supports work at the middle school and the high school. So those resources are very important as we move forward this system for learning.
Mr. President?
Yes, Pat?
You said that you've gone and done workshops on this, what you just gave to us today, is workshop was for other schools to listen or who was the workshop for?
We, we've done a number of things. We've had quite a few districts visit our district. In fact, we at Willow have someone coming on Thursday. So we've had site visits, people coming to us. And then we presented this year in Milwaukee at the WACD conference. And we have presented this at numerous times in other venues regarding what our model is for literacy leadership.
So is it teachers that come? Is it school boards?
It depends. I've, we've done the DPI best practices and that was mainly teachers. The, and it was actually at WACD, both teachers and administrators that came this, this past month when we presented in Milwaukee. And, and then, for instance, we have teachers and principal coming to Willow on Thursday. So it varies.
Wow, so it is, the idea is spreading out and you're, you're one of the leaders on this or we are or?
Well, I'd like to think so.
I'd like to make a comment to that because we heard something very interesting at WACD and I was able to watch Peg's presentation along with the elves and it was fantastic. And we had several Hudson groups presenting that day at the conference at WACD. And one of our presenters overheard someone saying, "When I go to these events, I look to see where Hudson is presenting and I circle that and I go to that." And it just, it again, it speaks to the systems approach. We have several things to be so proud of and the elves are one example of that. But districts around the state recognize Hudson for its leadership and they seek out those opportunities to learn about what we're doing.
Terrific. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to administrative compensation study by Fox Lawson and Associates. Nancy?
Mm-hmm, okay. And I just want to say that Sherri Hole was six years old when I started in the district.
So there you go.
How's that for a transition? Okay, by way of introduction then, in early January 2012, the Personnel Committee initiated the process for a study of administrator compensation. And the purpose of the study, like the other studies of employee compensation, was to gather data from other districts in order to maintain the district's competitiveness in recruiting and retaining high-performing administrators. The committee also determined that the district, district should be similar to those used in the teacher study and include districts in Wisconsin and Minnesota of comparable size, approximately 4,000 to 11,000, and also high-performing Wisconsin and Minnesota districts based on student ACT scores and other test data. The Personnel Committee reviewed lists of Wisconsin and Minnesota districts of comparable size and high-performing districts of comparable and non-comparable size. The teacher study also included districts that teachers have applied from to teach in Hudson, districts that have hired Hudson teachers, and districts that teachers, let's see, oh, where more than 10 teachers live. While the teacher study includes districts with enrollments ranging from about 3,000 to about 27,500, the administrator study has a smaller enrollment range of about 3,000 to about 12,000. Over half of the comparison districts used for the administrator study are the same as those used for the teacher study. The Personnel Committee decided that the study should be done by an independent consultant. The committee set criteria for the selection based on K-12 experience, connections to both Wisconsin and Minnesota schools, and cost. The administration reviewed proposals, interviewed several applicants, and contacted references. With Personnel Committee Chair Mark Kaiserschat, Fox Lawson and Associates was chosen to do the study. Tonight, Jim Fox of Fox Lawson and Associates will present the study results. And later in tonight's meeting agenda, the board will be asked to provide guidance for a salary plan for competitive compensation for all Hudson employees. And Mr. Fox will consider such guidance and return later to make recommendations for administrative compensation, first to the Personnel and Finance Committees of the Board and thereafter to the full board in January. Mr. Fox?
Thank you, Nancy. Good evening. I was six when I started this study. All right, that one's going to go on a little bit too long. So what I want to do is I want to go through the study itself, the process, and the results. So I'm going to, I'm going to go fairly quickly in terms of, of what we were asked to do and, and the process that we went through so that you get a sense, because I'm sure what you want to look at is the results. So we were asked to, to conduct an independent study of compensation and benefits for the administrative positions among a group of other districts that you would be competitive with. And so we went through a process of selecting those districts and identifying the ones that we thought, based on professional criteria, would make sense. And these were the benchmark jobs, what we call benchmarks, the ones that we surveyed in order to collect compensation data on. And as we go through this, you'll see some more information about these jobs. We developed a special survey questionnaire. In other words, we developed a customized salary and benefit survey questionnaire that we sent out to comparable districts. We tried to make it very easy to understand and, and in a manner that people would respond with good valid data. We prepared summaries of the jobs based on current job descriptions within the district so that when the other districts compared their jobs, they could say, yes, this one's a match or that, no, it's not a match. And we had some very specific criteria that we, we asked for. We included minimum qualifications and we asked them to match at least 70% of the jobs so that we would be assured that we had a good match. Now, we have, we asked 23 school districts. About half were Wisconsin districts that were included in a list that Dancy had provided to us, and half were in Minnesota, primarily in the Twin Cities metropolitan area. And we based it on populate, or enrollment size. We wanted to get some smaller, some larger. We based it on location. And we went through that process to select the districts that we thought would be a good comparison. Also, some information on ACT comparisons and comprehensive assessments and that sort of thing were also taken into account to make sure that we had a good match to the Hudson district. Now, when we do a survey like this, we're always depending on other people to provide us information. So we're asking for their cooperation. We asked for 23 to respond. All but one did. Roseville, which is my district unfortunately, did not respond, but we got good data from 22 others. That's an excellent return rate. These are the districts that we received information from. And I'll just, I'll let you look at that for a minute. Okay, so in order to make sure that we got these surveys back, we called them every week. We followed up with them to make sure that the data was accurate. We looked at the data several times to make sure that there weren't out, too many outliers. If there were, we called them up, we questioned them to make sure that the data was good. And then, once we were convinced that that was good information, we summarized that. Now, we have a couple of things that we did also. Now, as you look at the list of participating districts, you'll notice that some of them are a little ways away from here and some of them have different economies or labor markets. And so one of the things that we did is we took the salary information that we obtained and adjusted it for the Hudson labor market. That meant in some cases, we adjusted the salaries down and in some cases, we adjusted the salaries up. It wasn't by much, but this is a professional practice that we use. We also trended it forward in case they had provided us with slightly older information, we trended it forward to be effective at a particular point in time. So the data is effective as of June 2012. And then what we did, because there are different duty days or different work years for different positions, we standardized it to 260 duty days per year so that you can look at it as a duty day salary or an annual salary. Now, there are a couple of other things that we have to follow, and that is the United States Department of Justice and the Federal Trade Commission say that if you don't get more than five for any particular job, you can't summarize it. And this is a longstanding dispute that has existed, but no reason to go into the details. But we didn't have some, for some data points, we didn't have enough, but for most of the salaries, we did. Now, we also calculated various statistics and there are some other detailed reports that we have available to you. We calculated the mean, the median, the lows and the highs, and those are provided on some other summary sheets in order to make sure that you get a sense of the entire scope of the data. Now, we compared median, that's the middle point, 50% pay less, 50% pay more. This is the most stable number when you look at salaries. And so what you have on this chart are the benchmark jobs, their current average annual salary, again standardized for 260 days, the market median salary, and then the percentage difference. If there's a negative number, it shows that Hudson is paying less. If there's a positive number, which you'll notice there are none, the district would be paying more. Now, these numbers go from 4% to 18% and, and everywhere in between. But the thing that you want to pay attention to, I'm going to flip forward, whoops, there, to this chart, is that when we look at data like this, we say, there's some standards that we want to look at in order to judge the, the data. Whenever we get within plus or minus 5%, in other words, your salaries are plus or minus 5% of the market, you are very competitive. If it's plus or minus 10%, you're still competitive. But once you get beyond plus or minus 10% and you get towards the 15%, there's a significant misalignment with the market. And what we experience is that when that occurs, you have trouble attracting and/or retaining the quality of people that you want. So you need to be very concerned when you get to the plus or minus 10% or higher number in terms of where you are in relationship to your competition. So I think that's good to put in perspective because while you as a person or an employee are applying for a job and you say plus or minus 5% or you get a 5% raise or 5% less, that's significant, obviously, in terms of your own take-home pay. But in terms of market data, how you want to look at it is, is with these guidelines. Now, let me go back here to this chart. We also collected information on benefits. I just want to highlight a couple of things. There's a lot of detail here. When you step back from all of the, all of the information on healthcare and retirement costs and days off and sick time and, and whether you can bank those days or not, you're pretty competitive. Now, you're different on various items. For example, what you spend on healthcare is less than the market. Now, that's a good thing because I suspect you still have healthcare. So I would suspect that your, your health plan is a little bit less expensive than some of the others. Your retirement contributions are right in line with the market, even though we have a, we have two different states that we're dealing with here. The number of holidays and vacation days that you offer are about the same. Market offers five additional personal days than you do, and the number of bereavement days are comparable to the market. You offer two fewer sick days and the market allows more vacation and sick days to be carried over. In terms of tuition reimbursement, you are comparable. And then with regard to post-retirement benefits, at least initially, you are, you pay a little bit more than the market does. So in terms of the, when you take all of those into account, I want to repeat that you're pretty comparable with the market. So again, taking this to, into account with the prior chart, some of your jobs, you have some issues that I would, if I were in your position, I'd be paying attention to. I would also be looking at your retention or recruitment capabilities for those positions in order to identify what's the appropriate way to go forward. So with that, I'll open it up to questions.
Any questions? Dan?
Mr. President, thanks for that report. My question has to do with the benefit comparisons because I know that can be sort of across the board. So when, when you say that that's comparable, are you sort of using that same 5, 10, sort of that, that range?
You mean the overall summary of comparable? No, it's harder to do it that way with benefits. So what, what we're doing is we're basically saying, okay, you're a little better here, but you're a little worse here. On balance, where are you? And so it's a judgment. It's a subjective judgment based on our experience and looking at other organizations in terms of how they compare. So in some cases, you spend less. In some cases, your benefits, your days and so on and so forth are a little bit less, but on others, you're, it's a little bit better. So on balance, you're pretty close.
Thank you. Others, any questions?
Mr. President? And I know we went through this extensively in Personnel Committee, Jim, so I apologize for this. But with regard to the healthcare spending, would you have a number about how much less percentage-wise we are spending than the market or?
I have the data.
I know, I, I'm appreciative. I just couldn't remember.
Give me a minute.
Sure.
Well, obviously, there's different sorts of options. You can do the employee only, the employee plus family and that sort of thing. But let's, let's go to just the employee only. So you're paying, as an employer, you're paying 511 per month, per employee. The market is paying 565. So there's about $50 difference there. The market is paying 565, so there's about $50 difference there. The employee, on the other hand, is here, is paying 73, whereas in the market, they're paying 163. So, we've got about, what, $800, I can't do math that quickly in my head, $800 in the market, you're at about 600. Now, that's, you know, on a monthly basis, you add that up over the number of employees, number of months, that's a chunk of change. Yeah, yep.
Go ahead.
Just a clarification, and we talked about it in Personnel, didn't know if this represented the high deductible health insurance plans.
Right.
That the district was contributing to. So, that might not represent that amount of money that was coming from the district to support employees and we just really didn't have that information.
Right.
So, it may be reflective of the difference there.
It could be. I, it's hard to tell.
And you may have covered this, but I just wanted to ask you regarding comparabilities to the healthcare programs themselves. I mean, they were, I mean, that might be difficult to get a apples-to-apples comparison with each of these.
It, it is. You know, some of the plans don't include vision or dental, some of them do, and, and we didn't drill down that far. We kind of take a, a pretty generic vanilla approach and say, what are you paying for the most popular plan? So, yeah.
Mr. President?
Yeah, Mark.
Just one more question along those lines. Jim, do most districts now have a high deductible plan? Is that, is that pretty much the?
They do, right.
Okay, I thought that would be the case. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Thank you for your report and we'll be revisiting this in an action item a little bit later, as Nancy had said.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. By way of report, I'd like to just cover our secondary space for learning, issues that we're dealing with and a pretty robust, I would say, board work session a couple of weeks ago. Given the fact that we were facing, kind of, where do we go from here, kind of a scenario, I thought, I was very proud of our board in terms of arriving at, after three hours, arriving at the, the concept and the framework for a process that will be shared a little bit later on by our administration. We really started out the session with regarding looking at material that was requested by the board, such as information from the 2004 task force, the previous criteria that were set, other information that had been available to us previously, site plans at UU, things like that. Reviewed all of that information and of course, the objective for this session was to determine a framework for a process, our plan to move forward. And we were kind of on both ends in a sense. We had ready to jump to a solution on one side because we had all of this work done and we were, on the other side, really feeling like we need to go through this whole process again. What I think we arrived at was a, somewhere in the middle of that. And I'm not going to, I won't go through the process with you because that'll be covered later, but I think what, what we've come up with and what the administration has done for us is to come up with a plan that incorporates a broad, wide spectrum of voices and, and participation that'll then be narrowed down to a more focused scenario of solutions that ultimately then will go into the community for their review again. We're sensitive to the time needed for these things. On one hand, we want to expedite it. On the other hand, we want to make sure that we're doing due diligence and following through properly with each step as, as accorded. So, I think, I think I'll, I'll leave it at that unless any of the board members wanted to say anything in addition to that, but, Mark.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just one, just one way in brief, then it will be brief. As, as Tom sort of characterized, our, our discussion is being across the entire spectrum from wanting to move forward with a solution immediately to revisiting some of the, the issues in the past that the task force addressed. I was one of the individuals that believes that we should move forward. I think the task force recommendations are valid. We've been following that blueprint. We're sitting in Rivercrest, which was part of that. I think the community weighed in quite positively just this past spring with the recommendation for a, supporting a new secondary school. I don't think anything has changed since April. I think the results do speak for themselves and I think but for a short-sighted city council, we would be proceeding at St. Croix Meadows. So, I think our course of action should be to find the next best site and to proceed with a secondary school as, has been demonstrated by our community just so strongly just a short time ago. Thanks, Tom.
Okay. Thanks, Mark, for expressing your view and you'll hear about the process moving forward. So, all right? So, thanks, Mark. I appreciate that. I don't believe that there's any citizens' request to speak. Okay, so we will move on then to topics for action. As I mentioned at the beginning of the board meeting, we've done a little bit of a swap with bullet point two and three, but we'll start with the criteria. Mary.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I just want to emphasize, this is looking at a criteria for long-term secondary space for learning. So, as we look at potential solutions, the criteria that the board would approve would be the criteria that would be used to help evaluate those solutions or potential solutions. And this is different than the short-term plan that is in process right now for next year and looking at how do we relieve our growing enrollment and lack of space at the middle school and the high school, and that's an internal process. So, this is really focusing on a long-term plan. And the criteria that you see in front of you is a criteria that the board talked about at the board work session that President Tom just talked about. And it comes from criteria that has been established in the past by the facilities task force, by this board has endorsed criteria and also previous boards. So, it's a combination of those and reorganize in a way we think is helpful. First of all, it looks at enrollment and the need that's out there. And the first bullet talks about, we're looking for space for the long-term for grades six through 12 for the next 10 years and at least the next 10 years. And given, that should also address looking at flexibility for expanding in the future. And then, a plan for per grade level, at least 550 students. Obviously, a safe and secure learning environment and the class guidelines that the board has approved and reinforced and endorsed multiple times in the past. Along with enrollment, this additional space for learning needs to address the program and that is just as important as the number of students, but the program that it represents. And so, the bullets that you see here represent the crux of the program and the vision of the district HSD 2025, increasing expectations for student learning that we've talked about this evening, supporting quality learning experiences for each student to be successful at a higher level, grade configuration that supports academic and co-curricular programs, adequate parking play areas and green space for the size of a facility. We've talked about high school learning for the future and the plans and the, the plan for that as it moves forward and is in implementation. The middle school house concept that the board has continued to endorse and serves the needs of middle school students. One of the bullets that was added as a result of the conversation at the work session, Dan Chernohoy suggested that we put in a bullet for technology. So, this is a new one, provide technology and technology access that can adapt to future industry advancements. The next one is environmental sustainability, which we talked about this evening and recognized. And then, enhancing school facilities, once again, what we looked at for Rivercrest as well, for all of our school facilities with heavy use by our community, as school community centers that support partnerships. So, in addition to enrollment and program and our system for learning, certainly their, their financial and the facility concerns that we need to address as well. So, proposed additions and new construction, we have to look at the sites, the current sites. Can they support that? Avoiding eminent domain, retaining the structural integrity and the usability of our current facilities, providing adequate and responsible use of those facilities. And then, certainly, an important one that I know this board's been committed to is balancing the learning needs of our current and future students with the cost. And lastly, our board has committed to a very significant community engagement process before they make a final decision about the space for learning for the secondary for long-term relief. And so, I would be happy to answer any questions or recommend these for approval to the board.
Mr. President? I have one question. I think when we reviewed this, we, we had 500 students.
We did.
Per class. So, I'm just interested, the 515.
When we looked, once again, after the work session, at the numbers and we were particularly looking at Hazel Reinhardt's low, low numbers, so the lowest numbers in her projections, she had, when we looked at an eight, nine building particularly, she had 1,000 and it's 1,080-plus students. When we looked at that and we thought of that in eight years, that's the number that she had projected as her low number. And we first had 500 here, as you noted, Brian, but we felt that that would be too low based on that. Then, we looked at actual enrollment and we also considered the, the impact of the new bridge, St. Croix River Crossing. And we want to make sure that this facility, whatever it is, the additional learning space, is adequate to support for a number of years ahead. And again, her numbers were over 1,000 for two grade levels in eight years from now.
Are there questions or comments?
Mary, do you know if Hazel's numbers took into consideration the bridge? Or was the bridge because it was just so up in the air? Was?
No, they did not.
Okay.
She's responded to that at some point in the past.
Anyone else? We'll move on then to the, or do you want to take, take action on each of these individually? I think we'll just, I think we'll, let's, is it okay? Let's review all of them and then take action at one? Or do you want to take them each individually?
I think you should do it individually.
Yeah. Yeah, you're probably right.
It's not, it's not consent.
So, yeah, exactly. Thank you. So, let's, I'll, I'll entertain a motion towards the, the criteria has been, has been presented.
Mr. President, move to approve the criteria.
Okay. Motion. Motion by Lynn, second by Dan. Any other discussion? Okay. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carries. Now, we'll move on to planning process. Thank you.
All right. Again, for the long term, the board has committed to a significant community engagement process that this planning process represents. And I would just have us focus on the, this moves out to actually coming to a solution, but it is more specific with dates and timelines and so forth for the initial steps. So, I've asked our communications coordinator, Tracy Havashaline, to join me in this and we'll talk through the details. This comes out of the board's work session once again and some of the consensus that was reached at that board work session. So, we're looking at a significant community engagement process that is inclusive and allows anyone in our community become engaged in the process and contribute to the final solution and the feedback that the board will review along the way. It also is designed to offer multiple opportunities and multiple ways for people to contribute to the decisions before decisions are made. So, that's what we'll talk about this evening and describe to you. I'm going to skip the steps. I see you're all looking at things. It's not the right one.
It's okay. We'll get it.
All right. So, we're going to talk about the steps, but we're going to skip the steps and maybe it'll get up there eventually that are about the architect selection for pre-referendum support that Financial Services Director, Tim Erickson, will talk about soon. And so, this evening, you're taking action on the criteria, the initial planning process that we're talking about now, the process to hire this architect for pre-referendum support. And then, President Holland will talk about a community advisory committee as well. So, that would be the, one of the first steps in this planning process. And then, as we talked about in the work session, we want to offer the opportunities. Should I wait because I see everybody like looking behind me?
Will it go back one?
There.
Thanks.
Rewind. Okay. All right, so you can see up there on the column that we are in block two that says "Action on" and the date is the board, it is the board and November 13th, and I just talked about that one. And I would add in that block with a criteria, initial planning process, that community advisory committee as well. The next one is something that was decided on at the work session of the board to open up to our community and staff to offer any additional suggestions for potential solutions for a period of time so that those could also be considered in this process. And that period of time is November 14th through December 6th. So, I'll have Tracy talk in a few minutes about how people will find out about that and it'll be communicated out. And then, I'm going to skip the next one again. It's architects. And the next one is we are holding, or we're planning to hold, two large-scale community discussion opportunities for anyone in our community to come in and share their views. And it will be conducted by an independent facilitator and I'd asked Tracy to talk about that.
You won't now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. These two large community engagement process or sessions, actually, a lot of people would know them as, or some people would know them as World Cafes. They are a focused community conversation and we have invited UW Extension staff to come and facilitate those for us. We have two dates that we have established and those are up there, November 29th and December 6th, and those will begin at 6:30. The location right now, we're pretty certain that those will be held at Camp St. Croix because we need a larger space. The, the conversations take place in small groups where we have tables arranged so that you have four to five people sitting at a table. There are questions that are determined that each group has a conversation around and then you rotate throughout the room. And we'd love to see 50 people at each of those sessions to, to have these conversations. And those questions may look like, though they may not actually end up being these, but close to this, what does 21st century education mean to each person at the table? So, there will be conversation around that. And then, what kind of facilities support their idea of 21st century education? And then, what do we need as a community, as a Hudson community to have as far as our facilities and our solution for grade six through 12 in that 21st century education model? And so, they'll, they will be coming together with a, a common understanding of 21st century education and then providing the board with their solutions for solving our, whatever they come forward with as a group.
So, this is a way for people to start getting engaged upfront with very important questions as they're considering space for learning and how that translates for our community for the future. So, that's a start. Why don't you talk about the second one, Tracy, and how it gets more specific later on?
Later on in the, in.
In the process.
Our activities. So, as, as you go through the, your plan on the right-hand side where all of the communication activities are going on, later in the group, after the board has had an opportunity to review solutions coming in and, and narrowing those down to a certain degree, we want to engage the community again in, again, some large-scale communications and, or discussions and focus groups to, to get their feedback and so that as the board moves. And so, that as the board moves forward to narrowing those options down each time, that by the time we get to a solution, we can have some confidence moving forward in what this community will support in a referendum.
So, those are part of this inclusive process where anyone who wants to participate and be part and contribute to the final solution can get involved. There are a number of other ways, and we'll talk about that as we go. So, on the second page, oops, it looks like we're at the second page of the process. Essentially, our community has suggested additional solutions. And at the work session, we talked about four different solutions at the time of consideration. One, the first three were those that were considered for St. Croix Meadows, building an eight-nine that could be expandable to a high school in the future, a three-year high school, our building a four-year high school. And then, it was also suggested that a STEM school be one of the potential solutions built on the UU property or the county property. So, that's the fourth potential solution that we'll be looking at as we move forward. And then, there will be others we expect will come forward from our community. Those need to come by December 6th. Some of them will probably come through that large-scale community discussion. And Tracy, will you talk about how the community will know about this opportunity to submit solutions?
Currently, the community can submit ideas or solutions online. So, we have a link on our homepage, also on the middle school homepage and the high school homepage, and it's gone out to our elementary families through their Electronic Thursday folder. It's an anonymous survey. It's just an open-ended question as far as what people have as far as ideas. The only piece that they do have to respond to is we're trying to find out where the ideas are coming from. So, if you're a resident, if you have a child in the district or whatever, those parts are part of it, but you do not have to identify yourself. Also, we will be providing a media release when we have the site confirmed for the World Cafe, the community engagement discussions. We'll provide that on the website. We'll send that out again through our Electronic Thursday folders and all of our other resources. We will probably also, because we want to get a wide range of voices, there are groups, community groups, that we would send out invitations to, but again, this is really something that's open to all voices in the community.
And so, going on to that second page and skipping forward to December 11th, that would be the next board meeting, we would be bringing back the potential solutions that have been suggested by the community for review by the board. And we would assume at that time that we would bring forward the information we have already about those solutions. It may be that someone suggests something that the facility's task force reviewed, and we would share that information and their assessment of that. We also certainly have enrollment information, and we can cast forward the enrollment or look at the projections and say how a solution might fit in that way. So, it's really looking at those potentials based on the information we already have in the district. So, it's a first look at those suggestions. And at that time, then, the board, we would expect, may narrow some of those solutions to identifying those that are the most promising, that they want more information and research about for us to move forward. And then, that would be committing those resources to further review. And at that time, and Tom's going to talk about this in a minute or two after we get through this process, is the community advisory committee. So, we'll skip that for now, and you can come back to that later because that's an important part of the process as well, and another way for us to get feedback and important feedback through the system. So, you can see that we have steps through about January, the beginning of January. And then, at that time, we really need in, by February, to review this process again and see where we are. How many solutions are still on the table? How many, how much work needs to be done based on those solutions? How long will it take the architects to get involved and do the work or other consultants that we may need? And so, we're going to revisit this timeline at that time and cast it forward. There are other steps all the way through on the third page to the end of, actually, a resolution for a referendum, but I won't go, take the time to go through those now. It's just a matter of, we have to update this timeline as time goes on. And then, Tracy, do you want to make any more comments about the communication plan to make sure that our community is aware of the steps and the opportunities for them to participate?
The other important one is that we always provide the Connections email for people to, so even if the initial website survey goes off in, at the end of this month, on November 30th, we will always take information through the Connections email. So, connections@hudson.k12.wi.us. So, people can always submit their comments through that system as well, throughout this whole process.
And I also want to recognize the role that we hope the Hudson Star Observer and Hudson Patch will play in helping to share this information with our community as well and making them aware of the opportunities that exist and how to become involved. So, we'd be happy to take any questions that you have.
Any questions or comments regarding the proposed plan? Dan?
Mr. President, I think this looks like a pretty ambitious schedule, and I'm looking forward to what comes from it. The one thing I'd like to just see if we could do is identify the initial organizers. I see Paul Moen out there. I don't know the other organ, are they here?
Yes.
Okay. Is it possible we could sort of have them stand up or, because that's, they're doing a big job here? So, certainly appreciate their work in helping us guide us through that process. Sorry, Ms.
Yeah, well, good point. Well taken. And I will recognize the two gentlemen. Thank you. Mark?
Mr. President, thank you. I guess, you know, what I see here, ladies and gentlemen, is a seeking of answers to questions that have already been answered. It's a great plan, I think, following a failed referendum. So, I'm repeating some of the same messages I had before. This, and I agree with Mr. Turner, this is an ambitious plan. This could take us well into next spring, summer, who knows? And unnecessary. The community's desires, I think, is well-known. A direct vote, and it wasn't close. I think this is an unnecessary plan. I think the community will support a new secondary school. They did this past April. I don't believe anything's changed. I think this is a, I think this is a waste of time and resources myself. I could be wrong, but I don't, I don't think so. I think that we should be moving forward with the plan that's in place, the plan that was successful. You know, I could take no for an answer, but the answer this year was yes. So, let's go with it.
Okay. Any other comments or questions or?
Mr. President?
Yeah. Sandy?
I believe this is a great chance to try to bring the community together. Right now, it is basically split. By going through this process, even though Mr. Kaiser Schott thinks that we should not, I believe we should. To take, we need to take this time to try to bring this community back together, to make a decision about what we're going to do for these space issues. We all acknowledge we have them. We have to figure out what we're going to do about them. I encourage everybody at the meeting to keep an open mind. There's nothing carved in stone that says we need to buy a piece of land and build a four-year high school. There are a lot of other options to solve the space issues for the next 10 years, as is Mary's desire. So, I think this is a great plan. It's going to take time. It's going to take a lot of work, but I think we're all up to it. We need to bring the community together, and this is a great chance to do it. Give them a chance to speak their mind about this. Thank you.
I would just comment that I understand actually both of these positions in regards to the vote and what it indicated. It seemed to be a pretty significant vote. At the same time, it did, I think, create some unrest in the community. And I think from that aspect, it does give us an opportunity to start again and pull together. And that's what I'm hoping for in this process. Anybody else? Lynn?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to move to approve the long-term planning process.
Motion by Lynn. Is there a second to approve the plan?
Second.
Second by Dan. Any other discussion? Okay. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you. Motion passes. Thank you, Mark.
Mr. President, can I make one last comment?
Sure.
You know, regardless of what we've gone through to get to this point, I think one of the very positive things that has come out of that is the level of recognition in our community that we need additional secondary space to solve the middle school and the high school long-term issues for that lack of space. And I think that's a very, very positive result in the community, a place to start over again.
Well said. I agree, and I believe that it's also awakened the community to this, to the issue. So, there's a lot of positives that we'll take from this, and we'll move forward with it. And with that, Dan had, Dan Turner, I had mentioned about two individuals. I received a call maybe two or three weeks ago from a gentleman I've never met, Paul Borget, and had a opportunity to sit down with Paul and Mary and talk about what could, what we could do along these same lines, what we could do to create an opportunity for the community with varying views and different perspectives to work together towards a solution. So, sat down with Paul. We invited Paul Moen then to join us and discuss this further. And I'd like to just ask, as Dan suggested, if you two gentlemen wouldn't mind standing and just recognizing you tonight? Thank you. It's always easy to remember their names. You just call them Paul. So, Paul One and Paul Two, or Paul Squared. As a result of our discussions, we had a couple of discussions, a couple of initial meetings. We've come to a point where we'd like to recommend to the board tonight, in addition to the plan, which would be part of the plan, of an advisory, a community advisory committee. I want to be clear that this would be an advisory committee, not a task force at the end of its work. It would not be recommending anything but advising us as we move through the process, which I think would be helpful. As well, it will be helpful to have representation, I think, from the different segments of our community that we can identify. So, and of course, the focus would be on the long-term solution to a middle or high and high school enrollment program needs. And the purpose of the committee would be, would be to review the information regarding secondary space learning potential solutions, offer feedback from the community collected by our process, the district, to report committee feedback and analysis to this board. And our, the scope of the work would be, again, solely on the secondary long-term space for learning, of giving feedback to the board prior to any decision that would be made of going forward with a recommendation. So, it would, its focus would be on this issue, secondary long-term space for learning. Really wouldn't be on anything else. Could evolve as something in the future, but this would be the initial purpose. The initial organizers, as I'd mentioned, community members Paul Borget and Paul Moen, myself, and then two other, two others that will be joining us. And the initial organizers' purpose would be to identify the criteria and the selection process, where we would like to put together a committee to add to the two Pauls, 10 others to be selected. Again, much of this detail is not determined or completed yet, but the total committee would be made up of 12. In addition to that, there'd be two ex officio members, myself and our superintendent of schools, Mary Bowen Edgar-Broden, as resources and support for that group, not officially committee members, but ex officio. The timeline for this group would be in conjunction with the plan that's been presented tonight. And by November 23rd, we would, the initial organizers, as mentioned, would establish criteria for membership, the membership application, selection process, and then the planning steps, completed by November 23rd. By, between November 26th and December 14th, there would be communication going out into the community about the opportunity to apply for membership and then an application for membership submission. And the administration would take responsibility for that function. By December 28th then, selection of committee members from applicants would be completed. And the first meeting of the committee then would begin in January with committee reports to the board thereafter to be determined. It should be noted also that as a part of the district, and this is an advisory committee of the district, therefore, it's subject to, and has to comply with open meeting laws and be posted and open to the public as well. So, with that then, I'll take any questions or comments about it? Sandy?
Yes, Mr. President. First of all, I see under the initial organizers, it says Paul Borget and Paul Moen.
Uh-huh.
And board members, Tom Holland and two others. That's two other board members?
Yes.
And then, down here where you talk about application, will those two board members have to also apply, or will they just be chosen?
I'll appoint them.
Okay. I would like you to consider my name for this committee.
Okay.
I'm just letting you know that I'd be more than willing to serve on this. Then, the committee membership, application for membership submission, I guess I've never been involved in any kind of committee where you must apply to be on it. So, can you explain that, what the process is?
Sure.
And how do you get qualified to be on it? And then, also, I'd like to know who chooses?
The, the initial organizers would choose. The process calls for an application, a communication that would go out to the community, identifying the kind of criteria, profiles of the individuals that we're looking for, areas that we're looking for, and allow anybody to apply then.
Okay. What kind of criteria would you be looking for, for this kind of committee? Or is that something that will be determined?
Some of that's yet to be determined. It's really, that is yet to be determined. But we're looking for, as we've discussed it, we're looking for people that have varying, various backgrounds, represent different segments of the community.
Okay.
Might have expertise, things like that. And of course, we're looking for people with a willingness to listen as well as participate, as well as offer ideas and so forth, people that we think we can, that will work well together as well.
Okay. And then, the entire initial organizers decide who to choose for the rest of the people? I mean, it's not going to be this board choosing who's going to be on this committee, is it?
No.
Okay.
Not the way it's set up, no.
All right. Great. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. President, I just want to add something. I'm not sure if this was, part was clear or not. The initial organizers work first, and then, they no longer work together, and they're not part of the committee, other than Paul and Paul are both part of the committee. But the two other board members are just part of that first process.
All right.
Okay.
Yep. Other questions or comments? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to accept an advisory committee. Just by the plan.
Mr. President, I move to approve the community advisory committee.
Okay. Motion by Lynn. Is there a second?
I second.
Okay. Second by Pat. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. All right. Moving on. Process to hire architect firm for pre-referendums support. Tim?
Okay. Tied into the process here is the, is the process to hire architect firm for pre-referendum support. And so, you can see the action list and the people involved in the timeline. So, the first thing would be to develop a request for proposals for architectural support, referendum support, pre-referendum support. And that will be done during the remaining, remainder of the month. Then, an ad will be then an ad will be published, uh, and invite RFPs from, uh, professional service firms, uh, also during the month of November. And then, uh, a review and evaluation of the submitted RFPs will occur. And then a shortlist of firms will be selected for interviews, and that will be in December. And then we'll have a, uh, interview panel, and it will consist of one facilities and grounds committee member and administrative, uh, folks. And, uh, that will happen in November. And then, uh, we'll perform reference checks on a finalist. Uh, whoops, we select a finalist, then perform reference checks on the finalist. And then, uh, negotiate the scope of services, uh, the compensation and, and a contract with the firm. And then, uh, recommendation of the firm, the facilities and grounds committee will review that information and then make a recommendation, uh, on the firm. And then, uh, the board will select a firm, uh, in the January eighth board meeting. So, any questions?
Questions regarding the, uh, the process for hiring, uh, an architect for the pre-refendum?
Well, one question. What's the, uh, what's this, uh, what's the support we're looking for?
The functions, uh, of this?
Just like, a big picture, you know?
It will be, right, it'll be a big picture. It will be to, you know, as you start to narrow down different options, it will be looking at those options and, uh, developing, uh, conceptual costs for those options and, uh, the challenges of those, uh, various options. Just assisting and supporting the board as they move, move through the process, the whole, the big process.
So, any solutions that come forward that we seem to be interested in, then determine the feasibility of those solutions and that type of thing?
Okay. And the land space required and things like that?
Yes, yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yeah, Pat?
So, this would be the firm in the end that would be the architect, that would help us, would be the one that would be making the plans and following through with?
That would be, that would be a second. So, the first, this process is just pre-refendum support. Um, and you'll work with this firm to provide that, as they go through that support process for you. And then, um, once we get to a, once it, once a referendum comes about, um, then determin, upon the determination of that outcome of that referendum, then there would be a second, uh, selection for architects who will actually assist in designing whatever the final solution is.
It could be one and the same?
They could be.
Okay.
Other comments or questions? Okay.
Move to approve.
Motion by Brian. Is there?
Second.
Second by Lynn. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. Moving on then to salary benefit guidance to provide competitive compensation for employees. Mary?
With the report on the administrator comparability study, we've completed all of the comparability studies for employee groups. And certainly, I think Nancy Sweet and her department for all the work that's gone into those studies and continuing to update those studies along the way. You have binders at each of your places with, I believe, the updates of those studies, Nancy, as we've moved forward. And she'll address that, I think, in a, in a few minutes. Um, our next step is developing a salary plan for your consideration with this data in mind. And so, we're looking for guidance from the board on what you want to see in that salary plan, that, um, our goal has been to bring that back to you in January for your consideration. And Fox Lawson would be part of that as well for the administrators. Um, I, and Nancy's going to talk about the summary, uh, document that we have for you. And then I'll talk a little bit about the guidance that, and discussion that we had at the teacher advisory committee meeting in regard to, um, what they would like to see as far as guidance and goals for that salary plan. And then, Mark Kaiserzad, as chair of the personnel committee, is going to, um, give direction that was made at the personnel committee meeting. So, Nancy?
Mm-hmm. Uh, in your, uh, in diligent and also in your notebooks, you have that tentative timeline, so you can see, uh, from August until now that we're moving forward and where we're at with that. Uh, also, on November sixth, uh, the, uh, salary and benefit executive summary was presented to the personnel committee and then updated, um, as of today. And what has occurred, um, over time, uh, from the original reports, and you have those in your notebook, and then you've got the updated report for each employee group. But what's happened in the meantime, there have been some corrections to the original reports, and there have been some movements in other districts to increase, um, the salaries and wages of their employees. And at this point in time, uh, relative to the, uh, the majority of the employee groups, the only, um, districts left in twenty-eleven, twelve are Hudson and Superior. The others, Minnesota schools and the Wisconsin schools have all, have all established their twenty-twelve, twenty-thirteen, um, salaries. So, what you see in the, in the executive summary here is a little bit of a change. Um, in the teacher summary, the base, uh, which was approximately three hundred below the median is now nine hundred below the median. And again, that's due to the settlements that have taken place in the meantime. Uh, MA salaries approximately fifteen hundred, uh, below the median, now a couple hundred dollars more below the median. Uh, the top salary, however, remains, uh, the same, uh, approximately sixty-two hundred below the median. Uh, counselor, uh, psychologist, social work summary, um, one dollar per diem, uh, or about a hundred and seventy-four dollars above the median. Uh, the top remains the same, uh, below the median by about four thousand or nineteen per diem. Nurse summary, um, has changed a little bit. The base, um, is twenty-five per diem or forty-eight hundred above the median, but at the top remains, uh, thirty-one or six thousand below the median. Um, you heard earlier, uh, Jim Fox, on the second page, if you look on the second page, um, you heard Jim Fox talk about the standard of five, uh, comparison, uh, districts or other entities. And with, with corrections and updates, um, we did remove the occupational therapy assistant from, in, from interpreting a median because we failed to identify, um, at least five comparisons. Otherwise, um, the, the summary remains essentially the same.
So, now, moving on to the next page. Lori, with your help. Um, I want to talk about our conversation at the teacher advisory council, um, representing the teachers. And we talked about where they felt, um, we needed to be as a district so that they would feel supported with salary, um, at a level that, uh, met the board's goals that we had shared with them before about retaining high-quality staff and also, um, attracting and recruiting high-quality staff as well. So, this is a real different look at, um, the teacher, um, comparability than we've had in the past, because we've only looked at Wisconsin districts, only districts, basically in our, um, uh, conference because of, uh, prior to Act Ten. And now, because of the changes and our teacher, um, handbook and the, um, commitments that have been made there by the board, we are able to look at a different set of districts that are more representative of the districts that our teachers could be interested in. And so, as a result of that, um, we're now looking at districts, we have looked at comparable districts in Wisconsin that have been identified by the board's criteria, districts in Minnesota, and then districts that are combined. And we've looked at them on the teacher compensation in three different levels. The beginning teacher salary, the, um, master's level, and then the top salary for the district. And as, uh, we started this conversation with our teacher representatives, um, it was a conversation that evolved, and it was a very refreshing conversation. And I can only give, um, uh, very positive comments about the teachers and their reflection about the district and about themselves and then their colleagues and so forth. And it was really reflective of the collegial relationship that has evolved through the teacher advisory council. So, um, they shared, as they started to think about, um, the answers to the questions that we were posing to them, they shared some experience with us that we thought was important for you to also hear. And one of those changes that has occurred for them is called, they called a game changer. And that is, that it used to be that Minnesota had higher salaries than Hudson for teachers, but, uh, Hudson and Wisconsin had higher benefits. With Act Ten coming in and changes that have occurred, that, um, playing field has leveled in ref, in regard to the benefits. Now, Minnesota generally has higher salaries, similar benefits in both places, and our salaries are lower. So, what has attracted some teachers to the Hudson district no longer exists in the same way. And, um, you know, we had teachers describe things like they may have, a teacher may have a spouse who teaches in Minnesota. And they teach for the salary, or not only teach for the salary, but one of the things that they're choosing to work in Minnesota is the level of the salary, which is higher. And then the other spouse works in Hudson because the benefits are better. And without being the case, that can change where they choose to live closer or work closer to their home or whatever. But it has changed, and it is a variable that we need to take into account when we think of being competitive. So, one of the things that they noted. The other thing that, again, was very refresh, uh, refreshing and also, um, just, uh, really great for them to recognize is, uh, they said they did not want increases in their salary, uh, that created layoffs or increases in class size. So, they, uh, understood the financial situation that we are in and, um, kept that into consideration as well, which, which really appreciated. As they thought of goals, um, and looking at these three, uh, different groupings, Wisconsin, Minnesota, and then the combined, if they were looking at what would be in their best financial interest, it would be the Minnesota comparison group. Um, that is not what they recommended to us. And again, I think they were very, very reasonable, um, in their recommendations to us. So, they felt the most, um, the fairest list was the combined list for comparison. And they felt that was the list that we should focus on. And then, um, their recommendation was that out of the twenty-three districts listed in that combined list, uh, they would like the board to have a goal to be, have Hudson teachers in the top ten or at the median. I don't know which ones up on the board, but.
MA.
Okay. So, let's look at that. Um, if we looked at the combined list, the top ten would be North St. Paul for thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred ninety-two dollars. And the median would be thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred one. Very close. And they actually, in each of those, oh, that's not right, is it?
No.
I'm sorry, that isn't, because mine is the old data, and this is the updated data. And I'm not looking at here. Okay. So, um, just let me switch a page, and I'll be there. Okay. So, New Richmond is ten at forty thousand, seven. And what's the median ten? You want to go up? Just go up. Forty thousand. So, again, it's, it's close. Not exactly the same, but close. So, that's what they, their recommendation. And again, it was in the top ten out of twenty-three districts. Um, one or the other, it was an or. And then they also, again, very reasonably recognized the financial, um, situation that the district is in, the, the cost, obviously, to our taxpayer and so forth. And they said what they would like to see with the board, uh, for the board to have a one- or two-year plan, financing plan to get them to that, um, place, that comparison. So, those were the recommendations that came out of the teacher advisory committee. And then, Mark, you're going to talk about personnel and how personnel looked at this as well.
Yes, I am. So, with Mr. Holland's permission?
Sure, Mark.
Thank you, Tom. Um, just, I guess, just a, a couple of, of comments, um, basically just to kind of tying with what Mary said. Clearly, the market has changed with the, the, the change here in Wisconsin, the Act Ten. Um, it is, you know, quote, "the game changer." Because our benefits, which always were really quite rich compared to Minnesota, have really leveled off. Um, so, and it's a, it's a pretty dramatic shift, so I think we have to, you know, recognize that. Um, I also want to recognize the, the position of the teachers that Mary just stated so, so well. Uh, the fact that, um, I think they recognize, they recognize our financial constraints, um, and their, their goal at being at the median salary, you know, mirrors, mirrors ours. Uh, and their statement, of course, that, that, uh, with the, uh, progressing towards that salary goal, but without the use of layoffs, I think, uh, really demonstrates they're putting their students first. And I just, I just admire them for taking that position. That's, that's sometimes difficult to do, but, uh, it's clear where their, their heart lies. So, I'm very, um, glad to hear that. Uh, having said that, um, the personnel committee, which met just last week, did, um, endorse the concept, first of all, of using the combined salary groups from both Wisconsin and Minnesota, recognizing that as our market, and also with the goal as, uh, for the median salary to be the target for all employee groups.
Okay. Is that in your presentation?
It does. And, and just to, for clarification of what we're asking, we're, we're asking direction from you and guidance so that we can come back with, um, a salary plan for all employee groups. That certainly would be different, differentiated by employee group, and you could, um, choose to, uh, take action, accept, not accept, ask for changes and so forth, because certainly it's important for you to know how much this is going to cost, what's the impact on the budget, and so forth as we look forward. So, we really want some targets so that we can come back and, and give you the best, um, plan, uh, based on the goals that you have.
Okay. Comments? Questions? Sandy?
Please. Um, Mary, I think you, you said that the teachers looked at the chart, and they said that even though Minnesota's chart was a better deal for them, they were willing to go with the combined. But as I did the calculation here, it didn't look like that would be right. The Minnesota chart, Hudson versus the median is thirteen hundred and fifty-three dollars. And the combined Hudson versus the median is fifteen hundred and forty-four. So, am I missing something?
Um, I, not sure I can speak to that, because I'm using the old numbers, um, Sandy. So, what I, in the, in the, let's see.
I think if you move up to the, uh, if you look at top salary, Minnesota, if you look at top salary Minnesota, that's true.
So, because of the changes, it's the top salary that remains the way I described it? Is that right?
Thanks for that clarification.
Yeah. And if you, if you utilize their being in the top ten, clearly the combined is not as advantageous to them as the Minnesota.
Good point.
Now, say that again, if, if you.
In, in the top, in the top ten.
If you're looking at the combined column, you put Hudson in the top ten.
Yeah, yeah.
Why wouldn't that not be as advan, advantageous? The top ten, New Richmond is forty thousand, seven sixty-five. Um, the, the median of the Minnesota is thirty-nine thousand, eight ninety-seven. I'm just trying to figure out what the figures mean, and I'm having a hard time here. In the combined column, even if you moved Hudson up to where New Richmond is, they're at forty thousand, seven sixty-five. If you take thirty-eight thousand, five fifty-four, that's a couple thousand dollars difference. That's very different than the, the Minnesota figure. At, if you look at the top ten of Minnesota.
Right. And again, I was using the old numbers before they were adjusted. And so, that may have, I think that made it confusing.
I think that has changed. That has changed from the old report.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I think what Sandy, or Sandy, did you look at the top salary col, one? There's two charts. There's like the.
There's the three charts.
Mm-hmm. There's three charts. There's base, there's MA, and there's top.
Are you all on the MA salary, high, low?
There it is.
Looking at MA?
No.
I think so.
Top salary.
That's the one.
I don't know.
Okay.
It, it depends on where you are focusing your analysis. And the numbers have changed because the, in the previous report, the Minnesota schools were pretty much all 2012, '13, and the Wisconsin schools were not yet. And so those Wisconsin schools now have moved up. And so it, it's different than actually what the teachers saw at the Teacher Advisory Council. They didn't see this updated report.
And I apologize to the board for using the old numbers. They were just updated, and I didn't get them printed off of here, so.
So do you want to restate the recommendation then?
Yes, I was just about to make a motion, Mr. Holland, if I may. I would move that the board endorses a salary plan for consideration that uses the combined salary comparison groups from Wisconsin and Minnesota with the median salary as the target for all employee groups.
So motion, is there a second? Second by Lynn. Any other discussion, further discussion?
Yes, I have further discussion. At the Personnel Meeting, I expressed some concern about the size of the schools that were used for these comparisons. It seemed to me like in all of the charts, particularly the administrators' comparison, that some of the schools were much larger than Hudson. So I did express some concern about that, and I think somebody else, I think Mark maybe asked the same question. I also expressed some concern about making a blanket recommendation for all of the groups together, because I'm concerned about the cost. I did ask, or I expressed that I would prefer to make a decision about this after I know how much something like this would cost, because I think what you're saying is if we set this, if we pass this right now, then we have, as a board, stated that our goal is to move all groups to the median salary, all of them. That's what I had a problem with at the Personnel Committee meeting without knowing the cost. So I'm just stating that now. I would like to call for a roll call vote on this, on this issue.
Mr. President, oh, sorry, just a comment. I just wanted to just kind of respond to, Sandy, because I do agree with her. I'm concerned with the cost as well. I guess I view this as the first step. This is going to be our goal. I too want to find out what it costs first, and if it's going to be too expensive to meet that goal in the short term, it'll mean it'll have to be, it'll have to be put off, because we have to do what's financially responsible too. So I just want to, you know, I agree with you on that piece.
I, I understand that, Mark, but it, it would seem to me that once this board says this is a goal, and we vote on that here, that's pretty much carved in stone, that's the goal. And that's my concern. I don't want to lock us into something that may end up being so expensive that we have to say no for the next five years, when all of our employees are expecting us to do this, and then we have to say no because the dollars are too big. So I would prefer to know how much the dollars are going to be before I say yes, this can be our goal. That's my only point.
I think there's a, the term is guidance. I'm not sure.
Yeah, but somebody said goal. I think he is...
Clarification?
Yes, I guess I would say.
At the committee meeting, and because of your comments, and remember, we had this conversation.
We did.
We had it listed as goal. And because of your comments, we decided to change it here tonight to be listed as guidance, because we wanted to recognize your thoughts about that.
But I think I heard somebody say goal. I believe goal was in the...
I don't, I hope it's not in my motion, because I didn't...
It's stated as salary benefit guidance.
Okay.
In the, in the...
So the median salary is the target for all employee groups?
Right.
Yeah.
So it's stated as guidance here in this agenda. And it's, yeah, it's a fair point. I, just a clarification, in the timeline of this, there'll, there'll be final action forthcoming yet, so.
I understand.
Yeah, I know what you're saying. Okay, Brian.
Just another comment. So...
There's a fly.
I understand the process we're undertaking here. I just, I just think there's so many intangibles when you hire or retain talent, and are we still attracting good talent, come in here based on these salaries? Are we retaining our talent? I'm really concerned about, like all of us, concerned about the taxpayer impact. And, you know, I see some of the discrepancies, especially with the previous report. I mean, they're pretty large, and I just, so I just think we have to weigh all that in as we make these changes versus just because every other district is, as long as we're getting good talent and we can retain it, because of other things we're doing as a district in terms of investing in our teachers and having times for collaboration, I just want to make sure we put all into the, you know, all into the, to the prism, you know?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a statement that I, I was expecting more of a broad statement rather than kind of a narrow target of, of a number. In other words, I was thinking that we'd make a statement that we want to retain, or be competitive. We want to, we want to be able to attract and retain high caliber staff with the, with, with serious consideration to affordability. I would throw the, the advisor's comments in about not having to go through layoffs as a result, or not having to increase class sizes as a result. Those are, I mean, those are kind of the guidance that I was, I was thinking might come forward instead of a little bit more specific, instead of specific, so.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
Does this go back to personnel, or is there another look at this and a recommendation? Or what's the process again?
There will, well, there'll be three more actual considerations by the board. It'll go to personnel. Recommendations will go to personnel, finance separately, and then to the full board. So three more considerations with guidance. You know, we're asking for guidance to actually develop the numbers, Tim, and then come back to, to provide you that analysis.
So, so I could just, just kind of end my statement with, is I want to put that all, I guess, I'm not sure why we have to be so definitive that we want to get to the median. I'm not sure why we can't ask the Personnel Committee, you know, with input from the administration, to make a recommendation to the board that this is a, this is a salary we'd like to be at, that we think is the, versus saying that we want to be at the median. I'd rather, I'd rather the personnel to make a recommendation based off many other intangibles as well, and make a recommendation back to the board on what they think the salary should be.
Mr. President?
Yeah, go ahead.
For Tim to be able to work up numbers, he's, they're going to need some guidance on those areas to, you know, so do we tell him a plus minus two from that median, or I mean, how do you?
Well, we negotiated for years with the, when we, we used to set goals with the administration on what we want to do. We never came to the board and said, you know, what's the hard goal we want to be at? I think the Personnel Committee would, would provide guidance based off of the situation and, and look at the whole, the whole picture.
Mr. President?
Yes.
If I could respond. Fair question. And I guess my response, Brian, would be that's, that's what this is. I guess I view, and I can only speak for myself, not the entire Personnel Committee, but that wages and benefits are, are fundamental, and that that's where we need to be. Remember, being at the median still talks about the universe of, of jobs as half above and half below. So I think you need to start there. If we're going to try to, I don't know, get cute and see if we can have some below the median, we can try that, and I know there's, you know, you mentioned other intangibles, but I think you're starting to raise it a deficit when your salary and benefits are below the median. It's the first thing I'd look at, and so then it would, you know, it'd be an uphill battle then, well, okay, I might choose Hudson if there's some very specific things, and often there are. We are a district that's very attractive to employees, we know that. But to not be at the median just, I think, puts you fundamentally at a, at a disadvantage. And so I do view that as the goal. That's, I guess, my answer to questions. I think that's where we should be. We should be in the middle, thereby, you know, I think everyone will consider us. If we are in that lower half, third, wherever we may choose to be, that is going to be potentially a hard deficit to overcome.
I, I kind of agree, I kind of disagree, and... Which is...
It's still strongly both ways.
Mr. President?
I just want, I think we should control our destiny. I think we should, you know, I hate to be the, basically, because, because five other school districts decide to do something that now we have to do it. As long as we're retaining and attracting good talent, you know?
But, well, you, you do mention that we need to retain our, but we also invest in our teachers up to like three years of investing, of them teaching, of them learning, and yes, we do need to keep them, because if they do move on, and they're talking about, they're sharing, and we're sharing with other school districts around, all over, and people know that they know it, so, but it's going to, it's going to be competitive, and I hope we can do, what, what we're just asking is the guidance, give us the numbers that it will take us to get to the median. We probably won't get there for three, four years, but...
I have a hard problem with...
But we need the numbers. We, we need the numbers for something. Okay, you want it two points below median?
I want the Personnel Committee to come back and say, here's a recommendation we think we need to, to retain our talent, be competitive. In some cases, it may be the median, other cases, it may not.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes, Sandy?
To add to my confusion in the statement that Mr. Kaiserchat made prior to Ms. German speaking, he again used the term "goal." I wrote it down here. So that's, that's what I'm thinking, everyone is thinking here. This is a goal, even though you might end up with words that say something different than that. It is going to be perceived, everyone here and the public, that this is our goal, and that's the problem I'm having. Mr. Kaiserchat has used the word "goal" twice in his speaking, and I just, I just can't set that as a goal.
All right. I think, I think we understand it to be guidance, and there's another opportunity for us to vote on it. There'll be a final opportunity to vote on it. I, I see it as a, as a, as a, as a, as guidance, giving guidance. You could say it's a goal as well, I imagine, and, but it's still, it's something we're, we'd be working towards, trying to, within, you know, the parameters have been set. We're looking at trying to achieve that as a goal, and, and it's, it's a guidance, so. But it, but the, the bottom line is, is that there'll be a final vote. It's not set in stone, and we've made it clear to the public now that we're worried about them with their perception, so.
Can I call for the vote?
Did we have a second?
Yes, there was a second, and I called for a roll call vote.
Mr., may I speak one more time?
Okay, Pat.
I mean, for our guidance, I guess we're looking at, the teachers asked for that. We are, I think, as a board, we need to see those figures. So that's why the guidance is to ask our administration to bring them to us, so we can then know what needs to be, what we can do. And, and until we get those figures, we can, we can talk about this for three months.
Okay, all right. Anybody else?
Mr. President, just a clarification, because, you know, I know Brian had, had sort of directed a lot of this to the Personnel Committee, but because of the budget implications with all this, you know, I, I do see an important role for the Finance Committee for which I sit. And so I, you know, I, I guess I envision both the Finance Committee and the Personnel Committee, if that's the direction of this board, to work together, because, you know, there's important components of each that, that need to be considered, and given the fact that some of these employee groups, there's a bigger gap between them than, you know, some of the other groups, you know, it, it may be that we can't be on the same timeline, if in fact we're working towards some type of a target or, so, just some of my thoughts.
Okay. I would assume the process would include the Finance Committee, if so.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I don't know if this will help or not, but listening to your comments and thinking about what we need to actually come back with a plan, you know, the goal, I think, is what you talked about, Tom. It's really attracting and retaining. And the question really is, what does it take? What does it take to attract and retain? And that's what we're trying to figure out. Where is that kind of sweet spot to attract and retain? And right now, it's, it's a little difficult for us because, particularly right now, because the variables are changing. And there's some other variables that we're also hearing about that are changing. And so we're just continuing to try to collect that information to get a feel for it, but it is different at the present time, and that's why we do need guidance in how are we going to even look at the numbers so that we can come back with a plan, and you can say up, down, or whatever. Even if we take out the word "guidance", it's just the administration has direction to come back with a plan that attempts to get close to the median. And I, I think that's what we're looking at on the combined, and then it gives us some direction, and you can say, massage this, change this, too expensive, whatever. But that's really how I view it and what we're trying to ask, so that we can help you make a final decision.
Let me ask, it would be helpful to have some language in, in an amended motion that would, that would say something to the effect that our intention is to come with a plan, give guidance, give guidance to the administration to come back with a plan that addresses our ability to attract and retain quality staff with, with the goal that are the guidance or whatever you want to say.
Something wrong with "goal"?
Goal, the goal towards reaching the, the median level in the combined, in the combined comparison here. I'm, I'm trying to say it as, as a secondary, that the overall, the overriding motion is this more subjective, we're trying to attract and retain, and if that means that it's at the median, that's, that's great. If it's not, then it needs to be somewhere else. With maybe some stipulations that we take into consideration, finance, finances, we take into consideration the Teacher Advisory's comments about layoffs and class sizes. Thank you. My memory's not so good now. So, anyway, I'm wondering if we'd want to consider that as an amendment to the motion.
Yeah, I, I guess, I could probably, I mean, I guess I'm sort of...
You don't have to.
No, no, I'm, I'm trying to work with you here. I, I guess the way I'm viewing it is, Tom, is that if, if our goal or guidance, to not get towards a, a median salary puts us at a disadvantage, and maybe I'm reading too much, maybe I'm, I'm taking it as a given that if we have a sub median wage, wage and benefits, that we will be at a disadvantage. Now, I guess that seems fundamental to me, if I'm out there, you know, scoping the universe of jobs, and Hudson's near the bottom. You won't be the first employer I look at then. I mean, it's just my self-interest. So, you know, I, I realize, I realize fully that people take jobs for different reasons. I know that. But to at least be reasonably competitive, once again, the median is not, it's just smack in the middle, folks. I, I just think that is fundamentally the place that we need to be, or very close.
I think you'd arrive at that, given the, if the criteria is set that you want to attract and retain. So anyway, Lynn.
Mr. President, could we, in speaking to Mark's comment, could we agree that that's what our goal is, but that there may be a longer timeline in some of the employment groups to reach that goal, based on some of the gaps where they are, you know, where the gaps are smaller and more attainable, or the, I mean, could we, could we, could we agree to a timeline factor to, to make that, or do we not agree that median is where we want to be, I guess?
I think your point is good, because clearly, if, if there's a situation where you have a tremendous gap, then I'm going to guess that that's going to be a hiring difficulty. So, yeah, it's, it's going to be, I think, you know, nuanced as to where, some of these, some of the gaps are, are very small, almost, I mean, you know, well, I can't flip to it, but some of them are very close as to probably not even needing to be addressed. And as always, to Sandy's point, we have to be able to afford it. I'm not saying do this, whether we can afford it or not. That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying that down the road, we probably better place ourselves at the median. Now, if the numbers don't look good, and I'm completely with you, Brian, not going to do it. I'll be the first one to vote no if it's going to be too expensive, but.
Mr. President?
Big picture.
I call for the vote again, and I'd like Mr. Kaiserchat to restate the motion, if he could.
All right, then I'll...
Well, we need to all know what we're voting on.
Let me just ask, is there, is there objections? Because I do want, work with everybody. Like, is there objections to the word "goal"? I guess, because I would still probably like to use it, unless everybody has a visceral response to that. I'll change it.
I don't have an objection. Does anybody else have an objection to it? Why don't you put it in the motion, and we'll, and we'll...
Okay, I see. I believe I stated, I mean, I move that the board adopt a salary plan for consideration that uses the combined salary comparison groups from Wisconsin and Minnesota with the median... Minnesota with the median salary as the target for all employee groups. And and you can, if anybody wants something besides target, I know, target or goal, I'm not.
Okay, so.
Clarification?
Yep, Mary?
Um, I believe the first time you said something like direct the administration to come back with a salary plan, that that the rest of it.
Oh, I probably I probably did, which to come, okay. And what did I say this time?
That's a good enough clarification. I think we all understand what we're voting on.
So now that the now that the uh motion has been altered a bit, I think we'll need us another second to that, won't we?
That's correct.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Second by Lynn?
And a roll call vote, please.
Thank you, Sandy. Okay.
German, yes.
Kaiser Schat, aye.
Robson, aye.
Holland, aye.
Gerke, no.
Elmo.
Motion passes. Very robust.
That's a good thing.
It is a good thing. All right. Moving on.
We just wanted.
Um.
Yeah, I got more controversy than I thought.
Yes.
It's Mary. I'm just trying to get started here. Uh, we have uh we have seven policy revisions that were were reviewed in a a board work session on November seventh. Um, it was another marathon night uh of good discussion. Uh, I thought it was excellent. I was really appreciative of the board's um engagement and thoughts and comments. We started with um, we started with an understanding of a premise that we, I believe we agreed that we didn't want to go to the extremes one way or the other, that there would be, it would be so restrictive that we weren't able to function and represent our clientele. And that we didn't want to go so far that we became a board of operators. And so I think that was that was the start of the opening comments, opening comments um that
I think assisted us, I guess, in terms of looking at these policies. And then the process that we went through, we asked our attorney to come back to us with suggested revisions. We understood that we could change. Uh, we could accept them. We could deny them. We could eliminate changes that were suggested. We could do any anything we wanted to do. And we did. We eliminated some. We adjusted some. We uh and we uh it was it was a long night. But we went through basically each revision, had good discussion, good comments, good discussion again about it. And we came to consensus. And I thought it was really a healthy um prac- a healthy exercise for us, even though I was really tired. But um, so so but we also understand that this was of particular interest to the community and these policies. And so we we put it on the action item tonight rather than what we maybe typically do when we come to consensus, to put it into consent uh portion of the agenda, uh so that the community could could weigh in if they if they wanted to do so. So what I'd like to do with these the the policies here are is to consider them as a whole. And since we've gone through this, line by line, and uh and then uh if there's any comments to anyone or uh any particular item, any particular revision, we can have that discussion individually about them. The process was is that the board uh made the revisions, uh the administration changed those and and put those revisions in place and then sent them back out to the board for their review again to make sure that we accomplished everything that we intended to. And I think there was only one minor clarification from Pat, uh which is helpful. Uh, other than that, there were no changes from the boards, I understand it. So um, so with that, I'll take a motion to accept the policies. All right, your discussion. I I don't believe there's any, are there any citizens' requests to speak? Mr. President, move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Brian, second by Dan. Any other discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. Um, you guys probably already know I'm going to object to this because I've done it twice already. But I object to the process that we are doing this by which these policy changes have been brought before this board. There's been no motion second or vote ta- taken, and neither was there consensus of the board to take this action. I I said that before. I know we're not in agreement on that. And nor has this board uh has any board member initiated this action in writing, which is called for in procedure seventy-two hundred point one. Um, at the committee of the whole, when we all met, and it was a great session. I thought it was a very good exchange of ideas. Um, I did agree at that time to support these changes because many of the things that I thought were the most egregious items were removed. But when I received the final copy and I read them through again, I I reconsidered my position. Um, the adoption of this of the policies that this board, the adoption of policies this board and this restrictive plan has no plant place in the operation of a school district. The policies, I think, need to be brief and clean and clearly written so that the average person will have no trouble understanding their intent and knowing what they'd need to do to follow them. As I read them through after Mick was all done and got them all together, they still seem to be, I thought, as I was trying to think as an as an individual coming here, how do I sort this out and know if I'm doing what I'm supposed to be doing? Because there's so many that apply to the public. Um, they, many of the policies that are in here, I believe supersede the state statutes. And as such, I think, are probably not even enforceable because they're so much more restrictive than the state statutes. I believe the policies that's currently constructed are not in the best interest of this board or of the school district, um, future boards, and the citizens. So that's my, that's just my statement. Um, I I know I agreed that we would uh with the consensus, but after rereading them, I've I've reconsidered.
Okay. I would only make one statement to the effect regarding uh that it may be beyond the state statutes are uh but I believe that, you know, we had legal counsel there who is an expert in the field. And uh I I don't share that concern.
No, I know you don't. Um, and and that's fine. He's the lawyer. But you know that he and I have differences of opinion on whether he gives this board good advice. And I oftentimes think he doesn't. I know that you guys think he does. And that's just, that's.
There it is.
This is good. This is, you know, sharing of ideas. It's what we're supposed to do, I think.
Right.
Mr. President?
Yeah, Pat?
Um, is Sandy objecting to for what the public is supposed to, um, how they partake in in our process? And that's a problem, the way we've spelled it out? Because for one thing, if you talk about it supersedes the state regulation, whatever, isn't there, isn't, there is no state regulation that says the community needs to speak at a board meeting. Is that correct?
Uh, right. There's no legal obligation, was my understanding of a board, to provide citizens' opportunities to speak.
So we allow it with some guidance?
Mm-hmm. Right. Okay.
Mr. President?
Yep, Mark.
Just just two uh quick comments. First, I want to state that uh Mr. Walzberger has provided the school district with outstanding legal counsel for many, many years and has probably saved this district millions in dollars in litigation costs. Uh, and I don't question his advice or his recommendations. And I guess just lastly, just to express a little bit of regret, I I mean, I understand you changed your mind, Sandy, but I I wish you hadn't. The concerns you're bringing up were ones that we discussed at the committee of the whole. That was the purpose of that meeting. And, you know, we'd love to debate them with you at that time. That's was the purpose of that meeting. And I thought we left that meeting with consensus. So um, I guess I just hope that, you know, going forward, I, you know, I want to discuss these with you. But, you know, the mechanism now we set up, you know, apparently didn't work. But that was the place to discuss your concerns. And maybe we could have addressed more of them. But when that meeting closed after the marathon session, Mr. Holland, I thought we had a meeting of the minds. So I'm I'm sorry that that result, you know, didn't stick. But that's it.
Mr. President?
Yes, Sandy?
Second thoughts. And I I do have the right to do that, so.
Sure. Okay. Any other comments or questions? We have a motion and a second. That will do a roll call vote for this. Pat?
German, aye.
Kaiser Schat, aye.
Robson, aye.
Holland, aye.
Gerke, no.
Bell, aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Um, moving on to consent items, um.
President?
Yes.
Um, I would I would ask to have policy seventy-two hundred and seventy-two hundred point one removed from the consent items. Um, you removed all of the others. I'm not sure why you didn't remove these two.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, speak to that, Mary?
Um, I'm going to ask Nancy, too. They were not addressed at the committee of the whole meeting. They were com- addressed by a committee. So Nancy, you want?
They were addressed by the Personnel Committee, and the Personnel Committee recommended that they be acted on in consent.
The Personnel Committee?
Yes.
Yes. Oh, wait, learning and program development. I'm sorry. Learning and program development committee.
Okay.
Okay. Um, they need to be removed from the consent items mainly because all board policy revisions, if you will look at our own uh policy on how revisions are handled, um, the revisions, currently, the policy seventy-two hundred states that all revisions of existing policies may be adopted following one reading by the board. There hasn't been one reading by the board of these two items. I have never seen them. It was not presented at the committee of the whole. It was not presented to the board in October. So it has never come before us for a reading, either of these two items. So I'm requesting that they be removed, and we just vote on them separately.
Okay. Uh, we'll have the staff respond to that.
Well, certainly, any board member can request that an item be moved from consent to action. Uh, the practice, the longstanding practice of the district has been for a committee to review a proposed revision of a policy and then it for it to be read and acted on by the whole board in consent. That has been the practice. And the revision that's proposed is to align with that practice.
How can it be acted on in consent if none of us have seen it and don't even know what it says? I mean, putting it in consent is saying like, we're voting on it without even knowing what's in it.
Let me get clarification. If it's, what I thought I heard you say was that uh there there's needs to be a reading of the of the policies?
The practice, the lo-
And to be in consent.
Right. The longstanding practice of this board and even a previous board has been to have a proposed revision of the board considered by a committee of the board. And then the committee decides.
At the reading.
At the reading, as as the first reading, and then referred to the board, the full board, for action, either as a consent or a separate item, but typically as a consent item.
So the reading that Sandy's referring to has been understood to be in the past, the a reading in committee?
Honor of privilege.
The practice has been in that regard. Yeah.
Do you want to, do you want to read that again?
Mr. President, that's not what the policy says. It says that revisions of existing policies may be adopted following one reading by the board. It doesn't say one reading by the board or a committee or a subcommittee or a subunit or anything else.
Okay.
And if the, I'm sure, if that's the way this uh board has always done it, that might be precedent, but that you haven't been doing it right. You haven't been following your own policies.
Right.
And 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 that's correct. Sandy's correct in her literal reading of the board, of the policy. And that's a reason for the proposed revision is so that the board, the board's practice will, the the policy itself will be aligned with practice.
She's right. The revisions do address what you're doing.
Right. And until that happens.
But until that happens, until this is passed, you have to go by the old ones.
Understood. Okay. So there's a request, and I think what, based on that, well, we should pull it from.
Well, Mr. President, um, Robert's Rules of Orders say that if any board member asks for an item to remove, be removed from the consent agenda, it automatically needs to come out. It doesn't need a vote or anything or an approval. It just has to be removed. So all we need to do is vote on it separate.
As I was saying.
Okay. All right, thank you.
We'll take it out of consent. And I, and we should have a reading of it as well, of both policies then, to to align ourselves with the current policy. So.
Mr. President?
Yep.
I believe you can't read it tonight because it's not in your action agenda. It's not, it's not on your agenda as an item that's going to be acted upon separately. So it's not a, it wouldn't, that would be a violation, wouldn't it? Because it's not an agenda item as a separate vote?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Um, I want to clarify. The reading doesn't mean that we read it literally at the board meeting. It means that it's reviewed by the board. This was presented in the board materials that you all received on Friday. It's been there like the other policies that were the committee of the whole. You have had the opportunity to review them. And the reading means that the board really considers it. It's not a literal reading. I don't even remember any time in the last eight years that we've read the, read it out loud. It's reading, the board members individually read it.
Mr. President, I interpreted that what's in our current policy to be that it needs to be before the board for a reading before it's voted on. So if you wanted to vote on it tonight, you could have, should have been presented to us at last month's meeting or or considered at the committee of the whole. Okay? So that's just my position.
So what's your recommendation then, Sandy, is to pull it out of consent?
Just pull it out and vote on it separately. It's not a big deal. You just pull it out of consent and vote on it at the end.
And given that we, that based on Mary's explanation of what reading means, we don't, we don't need to read it here as well.
Okay.
Because it's been given to us to in our materials to read, so.
Yes, you don't move it into the action items. Um, you just pull it out of the consent agenda and deal with it after the, after you approve the consent items.
My mistake in terms of uh language here, in terms of what I was meaning to say. We're pulling it out of consent and taking it as uh as its separate vote. So.
Yes, thank you.
So do you want to make a motion, Sandy?
To pull this out of consent? You don't need a motion to do that.
No, a motion to uh to uh approve these these policies.
No.
Separately.
Someone else can make the motion.
All right. Brian?
Mr. President, move to approve policy number seventy-two hundred and procedure number seventy-two hundred dot one.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mark. Uh, any other discussion?
Roll call vote, please.
Okay, roll call vote. Pat?
German, aye.
Kaiser Schat, aye.
Robson, aye.
Holland, aye.
Gerke, no.
Bell, aye.
Motion passes. Okay. Uh, now we'll get to the rest of the remaining of the consent items. Um, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent items with a reading of the specific language on um, or is there, on expenditures.
Mr. President? And we approve the consent items including expenditures in the amount of two million one hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, four hundred and twenty-one dollars and ninety cents.
Okay, motion by Dan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lynn. All in favor indicated by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Motion passes. Okay, down to committee reports.
No, we need to deal with seventy-two hundred. Don't we need to discuss that?
Oh, I thought we did that.
We just voted.
We just did seventy-two.
We just voted.
I thought we were voting on the, um, all of the consent items except that one.
We already.
We just did that previously.
We voted on that already, and you said no.
And you voted no.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to committee reports. Uh, learning and program development. Brian?
Thank you. We met on October twenty-ninth. Uh, we reviewed the the two, the policy and procedure we just approved. We also did a secondary math update. That was the, I was, Sandy was also the uh math curriculum review committee. Um, and reviewed, did the update on the secondary math curriculum, looked at what textbooks and what the program we're going to use and that. Um, the program that was selected, what stood out the most was it had a high, kind of a high capability around web-based, kind of web-based tutorials for students that they could use at home. So it was, and just provide them uh more information before they get into the classroom so they can ask questions when they're in the classroom versus see all the material for the first time in the classroom, which I thought, we all thought was a pretty good, uh, pretty good process. And so we uh we we were, I thought we approved that and thought it was a great idea. So I'm not sure if I missed anything there. Al, Sandy? Okay. And then we reviewed the school, us, uh, the school report cards, which are available online. We did talk about the high school, um, high school. online. We did talk about the high school, high school rating, just a little bit was skewed based off some real small sample size around one particular student population, and we talked a little bit about that. So, any questions?
Questions? Comments? Questions? Okay. Thanks, Brian.
Yep.
All right, moving on then to Finance Committee meeting. Dan, turn of the...
Thank you, Mr. President. I think we addressed a lot of these items when we had our special meeting the end of October where we approved the budget. But we did cover the use of the residual funds. I believe the funds, those funds were used to subsidize three projects at Rivercrest, and then the balance went towards reducing levy. I think the other item of note was, there was a proposal regarding federal legislation, bill and sequestration, and we decided that that was probably an issue that'd be better handled by our national school board colleagues, if I remember correctly. So, any questions?
Any questions, Dan? Okay, well, moving on to the Facilities Committee. We had four agenda items. Two of them were covered tonight. A review of long-term secondary space for learning process that was certainly covered tonight. The process to select architect for pre-referent planning was covered tonight. The other two items that we talked about were the consideration of further study of UU site. The question before us as a committee was, if we're going to consider a high school on the UU site, we would need to start a process to evaluate that site in terms of wet, wetland delineations and navigable streams, soil borings, things like that, and the need to do that now while there's still climate available to, to do those things now so that it would fit within a timing moving forward with any considerations of solutions was discussed. And the cost at $10,000 to $25,000, you know, was, was a lot of discussion about it, and we really didn't come to any kind of resolution. So, we're, we're, bring it back, I guess, and talk about it some more. Do you want to make any comment about that, Tim?
I understand.
All right.
Just one clarification. You talked about a high school, and it was really not necessarily a high school. It was just a school on that site.
Well, I think that with the, the reason for the high school comment was is that the size of the school would necessitate that it goes beyond the 25 acres that's, that's virtually level, and we'd have to go into the land that has more grade.
Mr. President, I think the other part that we discussed was that we would wait until we get further along in the process to identify where those borings might be and whether or not wetland delineation would be important based on the size of the footprint of whatever would be constructed there.
Yeah. Comments? Questions? All right, about that.
President?
Yeah.
I'll just make a comment. I attended the facilities meeting. Of course, I can't speak while I'm there, and so I don't. But it was a very robust discussion you guys had. It was very good, and it was very informative as a spectator to hear the way you, you were going through things, trying to make a really important decision for this community and for the school district. So, I, as a board member, and there as being as a member of the public, I appreciated your, your willingness to talk about all the aspects of the decision you were trying to make. And you were very thoughtful in trying to decide whether to spend up to $20,000 or $25,000 of this district's money for those kinds of reports that may be necessary before you can, know you can go forward with it. So, I want to commend the Facilities Committee. You did a great job with the discussion.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you, Sandy. I didn't finish the last item. The last item was a review of the capital projects. The, the total in capital project budget for 2012-13 is at $585,000. One of the things that we did on an item was to bring forward tennis court repairs at $70,000 to $95,000. We added that to it, but we deducted that amount from the contingency number in order to arrive, excuse me, at the original budget number. So, just to report on that. So, that was it for the Facilities Committee. Any other comments or questions about that? Okay, we have finally then the Personnel Committee. Mark?
Thank you, Tom. Personnel Committee met last week. We had a presentation by Jim Fox, Fox, Fox Lawson, the Administrative Salary and Benefit Comparability Study, which we talked about earlier. Nancy Sweet presented us with a summary of all the employee salary benefit studies that we've been doing this year. We discussed about offering guidance to administration on providing competitive compensation. The committee did approve to set the median salary as a, wait for it, target for all employee groups, which we found earlier. Also, there was a request for additional staffing for middle school instrumental music. That is growth, growth-related addition. I believe it was only .2. Am I right about that, Nancy? Thank you. And then, lastly, we did adjourn to close session to prepare for negotiations with the teachers' union.
Thanks, Mark. Any questions of Mark? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to close session. If somebody could read that verbatim.
So moved.
I think we have to read this one.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
I don't have it in front of me, so someone else can do it.
Mr. President, I move to adjourn to close session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.85, parent one, parent E, to prepare for negotiations with WCEA, Hudson Teachers Union. Second.
Second by Sandy. Roll call vote. Pat?
German, aye.
Kaiserzschad, aye.
Robson, aye.
Holland, aye.
Gerke, aye.
Bell, aye.
Motion passes. We're in adjournment.